Ready Susan? Okay, we could bring the meeting back to order. We're going to carry on kind of where we left off. We were discussing application number 2016-677. Miguel had given his presentation and we moved on to asking a few questions. The appellant is not present today. So, we were questioning if code compliance had been to the property and had addressed the grading. We are looking over the paperwork that was passed out to us and it looks like at one point Mr. Watts had said he requested that the application permit be denied due to the fact that grading has been carried out on the site after the May 10th, 2016 deadline, supporting Miguel's position. In these photos that were taken, you can see the terracing a whole lot better than the other photos that were provided. So, do any of the commissioners have any other questions?
Well, it's great to have these materials and I really think we should always get the code compliance materials as communicated both to the applicant and to the planning department.
Definitely.
Because sometimes it makes a big difference.
I just wanted to answer your question from earlier. They have not applied for a grading permit with the county and they don't have a current grading permit with the county.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, because the Cal Waste Engineering letter kind of is an engagement letter that kind of leans to that direction is why I was asking. But I think depending on what the other commissioners have, I would like to take Mr. Watts's documents and add them to the resolution only because it provides more clarity, more reasons for denial and backing up your position. It just gives us a stronger position being that the appellant isn't here. I'd like to document that we took an extra step. We broke for lunch, made sure we had more documentation before us in making our decisions when we get ready to do that.
Definitely.
Mr. Watts is here too if you'd like to talk to him.
Mr. Watts, do you have anything you would like to say?
No, not unless you-
You can't talk till you get to the mic.
We didn't hear that.
No, not unless you have any questions for me.
Okay.
I can try and answer them.
So, I think Commissioner Wooster was questioning terracing and when you were out at the property, you could definitely see that there was terracing.
Yeah, as that photograph there shows in the top right-hand corner, there's clear terraces there.
Mr. Watts, my wife is very British and I sometimes have a hard time understanding her. But I never ever admit it to her.
I don't know what you mean.
In this case however, can you please slow down for my-
Yeah, sure. There were clear terraces there.
I think he said more than that the last time, didn't he?
That was the translation. Now, it appears that you informed the applicant of his violations. He took care of everything but the boundary line adjustment and the grading, correct? I mean-
Yes, possibly. I'm not too familiar with this case anymore, it's been a little while, but I seem to remember he corrected most things.
And-
It says that the setbacks and boundary line adjustment as well as a grading permit is required from Public Works and both of those items have handwriting next to it saying "in progress." But Miguel during lunch verified that there is no grading permit pulled with the Public Works Department, so that takes care of that for us.
Correct.
I think, in my opinion. I trust you Miguel.
Okay.
Well, and I think there is evidence of grading after May 10th without any extenuating circumstances that would justify this grading.
Well, if there is no further questions for Mr. Watts, we should let him go back to lunch.
Okay.
And thank you for coming today. And then, do we, is it okay, I just need to make clarity for myself. Is it okay to add this documentation to the resolution although the appellant was not given this as part of the staff report? Is it too late to add this?
To the record.
To the record.
Not to the resolution.
Correct.
I mean, I think-
Yeah, I don't think-
I'm sorry. I mean, he doesn't, since he's not here-
Right.
Right, we don't know, we presume this is his choice not to be here. The continuance was denied, so I think that, you know, we allow the, we allow all parties to add evidence into the record at the time of the hearing if necessary. And he's not alleging that there is a, that there was an issue with code as far as I understand. This was something that was questioned by the commission without, I don't, did he allege that there was some sort of reliance on code?
I'm going to look at his appeal letter, I'm going to read it.
So, I don't think there's a due process issue with you guys considering the evidence that you requested and was presented by them.
Well, I just think that it's good evidence to include for the Board of Supervisors if he appeals it up to them. Okay, this is a letter of appeal to contest the determination of my cultivation site. I was denied based on the finding that grading was done after May 10th. I would like to bring to light that the grading was being done prior to the deadline but was stalled due to the equipment failure breakdown when the equipment was restored to proper working condition. We finished what was begun prior to May 10th. So, he kind of admitted it. So, we go back to Commissioner Bocelli saying, he's already voted.
He's admitted that it was done after the fact. And I don't know of any excuses other than what the UL says and-
So, Commissioner Bocelli, I agree with you.
I know, so, mark it on your calendar.
I'm going to mark that. Everybody mark that on my calendar. Okay, so, if, can we, do we have verbiage we would like to use to add the code compliance documentation into-
It's automatically in the record.
Okay.
It's just if you feel the resolution needs to be bolstered-
Hold on, they want your mic on.
If you feel the resol-, if the commission feels the resolution needs to depend on a finding that there was no extenuating circumstances with code in order to make the decision, then you can do that. I don't know that you need that, it's up to you, it's up to you.
I feel it's necessary because he's not here to defend himself.
Are extenuating circumstances allowed?
Well, that's what, I think we're getting into a slippery slope when we-
Think so?
When we say there's no, we're encouraging people to come forth with extenuating. I think-
He has to argue no proof.
We've clearly considered the record and, and as it says here additionally in his appeal letter, the appellant admitted to having graded beyond the May 10th, 2016 deadline. His appeal letter is a part of this and he does not claim any extenuating circumstances. I think we've done our duty.
Okay, I'll go with that.
Well, I think that the resolution should include reference to the, to the on-the-ground photos.
That's fine.
As part of the evidence.
I agree too.
Including the ones that were in the staff report and the ones that we just received. Other than that, I'm fine with it.
Yep. Just add that to the evidence under number one.
Okay.
Yes.
So, Miguel, do you want to read that in, that recommendation and as amended, just documenting that we're adding those photos into the record?
Yes, so, staff recommends that you adopt the, or deny the appeal 2016-677, therefore upholding the planning director's determination to deny as amended by adding language referring to the photos that were taken on the ground.
Thank you. Can I get a motion-
So moved.
As amended.
Second.
Madam Chair, before you vote on this, I would recommend that we add an additional finding and evidence that the finding would be the appellant did not have good cause for the hearing to be continued and the evidence would be a continuance was-
Do you want me to read that? Sorry.
I can't read Julie's writing.
Okay, sorry. A continuance was requested by a letter of applicant based on him having an attorney but not wanting to engage the attorney to prepare a defense until after the Board of Supervisors decided how it wanted to proceed with the permanent regulatory ordinance. The appellant did not appear at the hearing, the planning commission denied the request for continuance, finding that appellant's decision to delay engaging his attorney until after the board meeting on the regulatory ordinance did not constitute good cause.
So, can you withdraw your motion in second and then let's do the motion including that as amended?
Yes, so moved.
Who's second?
Second.
Considered withdrawn.
Well, just an amendment to the motion.
Okay, we're just doing an amendment to the motion and you, the first and the second agree, so we can now vote. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries five oh. Thanks Miguel, sorry to make you work so hard.
No problem.
I would thank you for that paper's finished.
Oh, for anyone watching this, this action is final as appealed within 15 calendar days from today's date.
Okay, we're moving on to number five, 2016-830, and it looks like we have Mr. Groh here to date.
Before we get to that, I feel I must recuse myself from this particular item because Colleen Kelly, who's appearing on behalf of CNS Wellness, is a firefighter with Central Calaveras Fire Rescue Protection District and I volunteer with the district and as you probably know firefighting crew is a band of brothers and sisters and I think it would be inappropriate for me to sit on this one.
Okay, we'll miss you.
I'll be outside.
We'll get you when it's over.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so, now we are back to CNS Wellness and Health Group and Mr. Groh, you're going to read, present this one for us.
Yes ma'am. Paul Groh, Planner One with the Planning Department, and this is appeal number 2016-830. Colleen Kelly, on behalf of CNS Wellness and Health Group is appealing a denial of a commercial cannabis registration by the planning director. And there was one reason for denial and that was the registrant engaged in grading and earthmoving on the parcel after May 10th, 2016 for the purpose of establishing a new cultivation area on the site. Location, it's at 1606 Doe Road, it is 14.75 acres and it's at South Railroad Flat, it's in Township Five North, Range 13 East and Section 11. It is, I believe, let's see, about four or five miles from the site back up into Railroad Flat right there, and this is District Two obviously. On July 7th, 2016, the applicant CNS Wellness and Health Group, Colleen Kelly President, filed a commercial cannabis registration for 22,000 square feet of mixed-lite cultivation area and she was granted a registration pending for that size and type of canopy area. There's one reason, as we stated before, for the denial today and that is that the registrant failed to meet the requirements of Section 1795-165N7 and that reads as follows, "As of May 10th, 2016, all grading and earthmovement in the portion of the parcel to be used for cultivation shall have been completed, other than that grading necessary for proportional adjustment to the cultivation area to comply with setback requirements of this chapter. The registrant seeking to conduct grading for this purpose beyond May 10th, 2016 must provide the planning department with a copy of a current grading permit for this proportional adjustment at the time of submitting his or her application for registration. No additional grading or earthmoving for the purpose of establishing or expanding any commercial cannabis cultivation site shall be permitted after May 10th, 2016." The slide you've been looking at up there is the plot plan that the appellant submitted on June 30th, 2016 with their application for registration. The parcel itself is an L shape, this is really a diagrammatic plan, that leg's a lot longer and this one's a lot narrower, but down at the toe of this L-shaped site is the garden area. You can see right there that we have large setbacks to the property lines denoted here, we've got 200 feet there, that says 200 yards I believe and that probably goes to the property line. This I can't quite make out, but I believe that's 200 or 300 feet. So, when we look at the plot plan that the appellant submitted, we can see that there's no representation here of the necessity of a proportional adjustment on the site itself. With the application, the appellant also submitted five photographs and all five are kind of sandwiched on the screen right there. There was one that was taken inside, this appears to show a lot of clones sitting under artificial light probably indoors somewhere. The other four were taken outside, this is a general view I believe of the cultivation area. The other three are a lot more specific and what they have in common is that they show pots sitting out on the ground, they're sitting in a field that's got green and, you know, drying grass on it, there's trees in the back. What's really unusual, I think this is the only time I've ever seen, is the growing medium that's in these pots, it's very white, I don't know what that is, but you could, it could be perlite. You can see there's a real strong contrast between it and the surrounding area and we'll get back to that shortly. Couple preliminary aerials, we're going to look at a couple county aerials here. This is June 9th of 2016, the subject parcel is this L shape right here, coming off of Railroad, Railroad Flat Road, Doe Avenue right here down the long drive. The cultivation area is way down here in the toe and this is June 9th and at that time I think we had the field with the white perlite pots, the perlite in the pots down in this corner. We're going to be looking at enlargements of this area right here. But real quickly, let's just move forward a few months to August 20th and even in this photograph right here, you can see that some, something substantial here, some earthmoving of some type has occurred over here, the site is totally cleared off and it appears like the cultivation area shifted to the northeast. Let's move on to something a little more relevant to May 10th, 2016, this is the May 31st Google aerial. You can see this is our cultivation area right here. Again, you can see those, that cultivation material within those pots is really sticking out right here. So, this is the site and this is three weeks beyond May 10th. At this point, all adjustments in terms of grading should have occurred on this site to remain in compliance with the urgency ordinance. Just a couple of overlays here, you can see the bluish overlay is the 2016 cultivation area, the yellow is going to be what we see happened, well, the way it is this year, it actually, I believe, happened at the end of last summer in 2016. So, on to Google aerial from this year, June 28th, you can see the cultivation area has What we have here is approximately 21,000 square feet. Within this 21,000 square feet is approximately 11,000 square feet of actual cannabis cultivation. If you take the footprint of this cultivation outdoors and do the footprints of each individual hoop house, it adds up to about 11,000 square feet. The 2016 cultivation, which is actually, again, the blue right here, this was approximately 3,400 square feet. So, what we have here pretty obviously is expansion on the site. That means one of the, well, that's, that's one of the things with the urgency ordinance that'll kill you as far as grading after May 10th is expanding your cultivation area and then it certainly appears that we do have grading here. So, based upon those facts, the staff decided, based upon those findings, the registration was denied and that occurred on August 31st, 2017. There was a letter of appeal that was filed on September 15th, 2017. The appellant discussed the necessity of removing burnt and falling trees in the cultivation area, there were drainage problems impacting the cultivation area and they wanted to explain all of that, the necessity for making these adjustments because of those reasons. They also stated that they are honest and they had done everything by the book. So, that's pretty much it. Actually, I would like to go forward, this is a sheriff's office aerial that we acquired just a few days ago and you can see this was taken July 16th, 2017 and it's, you can see the grading that's occurred around here. And that wasn't included in your staff report, but I wanted to present that just to give you a better idea of what occurred out there on the site. So, that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
It's clear to me that what used to be covered with grass or trees is now bare dirt. Do you have evidence or can you tell from these photos that actually earth was moved?
No, I can't tell that earth was actually moved right there. I mean, I can't, I, I wish I could get a clearer shot of that. Actually up in this portion, and it wouldn't necessarily say that earth was moved, but this area right here, there's, there's some very strong runoff occurring in here where we're getting goalies on the, on the face of this bare earth up in here. So, it appears like that has been scraped pretty much down to the ground and erosion is having a big effect on it. If you see the actual photograph itself, it really, it's down to bare earth right there and I can't imagine anything else that would, would, would do that. As far as grading goes, the actual definition of grading includes clearing, so, under our grading and drainage ordinance, so regardless of whether there was actually earth, you know, earthmoving equipment out there, say a blade, you know, scraping the land, you know, if we were going to go by the county code, grading and drainage ordinance, the definition of grading just includes clearing also.
Well, doesn't it read earthmoving includes clearing?
I will, actually, I have a copy of that and give you details. Pull it out, so we can file. I think I can read that to you. And, this is the definition taken from the Calaveras County Grading, Drainage and Erosion Control Design Manual. And the definition for grading and grading activities. Grading and grading activities refer to all earthmoving activities including clearing, grading, excavation, fill placement and stockpiling of earthen materials, including any combination thereof.
Yes, refers to all earthmoving activities including clearing, but you still have to move earth. It may be for the purpose of clearing, but it seems to me reading that or hearing that, it still has to move some dirt to qualify as grading. If I simply go out and cut down a bunch of live oak trees or remove the grass without moving any dirt, it's hard for me to see how I've conducted a grading activity.
I would agree, if you're just cutting the trees and leaving the stumps, you're weed eating down to bare earth but not actually moving any dirt, but I think it's very clear here that, you know, it's scraped down to bare earth and it's, I think that this clearly falls under the clearing version of the grading manual, you know, for, for grading. And just to point out that while the, this isn't, that definition's not included in the ordinance, the grading ordinance refers to the design manual and that definition is in the design manual. But, you know, looking at those images, it is very clear to us that this is not just simply vegetation removal. This included using, you know, equipment to move the stumps out of the way and that, that's earth movement.
In looking at this picture here too, Commissioner Wooster, you can see a line along here where there's clearly a transition and as Mr. Groh pointed out a minute ago, you can see lines in the earth where water has created channels, you can see similar lines here. So, in looking at this picture myself, I would, I would believe that a blade has moved across the earth here and stopped along this line and this is just bare earth that is wide enough actually for even a vehicle to travel and that there is a transition from relatively flat to a slope that has been channeled by weather.
Well, I agree that, that it's been scraped down to bare earth. My problem is, did they move any bare earth? Because it's, it's earthmoving including clearing.
Not two steps if you cut down the dead trees from the burn scar areas because, I mean, I can see the sliding coming from a big winter storm after having a fire. So, is it, do we want to hear from the appellant or do you have more questions?
We've also-
We can hear, probably Tom first, I do have questions, but I can't wait.
And there is, I gave a copy of the photograph up there that's going to be passed.
Is there an issue with the different parcels? It looks like he's on three different parcels now as opposed to the original application showing the garden.
That looks close, but I don't think we saw anything there that we would feel comfortable with as far as pursuing a setback violation.
Well, more than a setback, it looks like he's crossing over the parcel lines.
You mean the line right there?
Yes.
Yes.
And the other one to the right, possibly.
Possibly.
Definitely setbacks, I mean, that-
This would have been a good one where we, if we could have actually had a site inspection out there, but unfortunately we didn't.
This was never inspected?
Yes. All right, why don't we have the appellant come on up and hear what they have to say, please? And we are here, and thank you very much for that, we appreciate it. Could you state your names for the record, please?
Absolutely.
Tell us what your position is on this.
I am Colleen Kelly. I am actually, this is my family's parcel, so it's a combination of landowner plus, I'm the president of our legal LLC that we've created to make sure we did everything correctly and our, our company's name is CNS Wellness and Health Group, focusing mostly on CBDs in order to help, you know, people with issues, we have mostly friends with that. We've also provided, and this is my vice president's-
My name's Edwin Angie, I am the Vice President of CNS Wellness.
Thank you.
And I apologize for my handwritten letter trying to set up the appeal because I didn't know we had to provide that, I would have done something much more professional.
We're looking at handwritten letters, don't point.
Okay, sorry. I just, I'm very organized and usually try to, I provided three copies of my letter and we also provided copies of photos showing the mass amounts of trees that we've had to, to actually, that were actually falling while we were working.
What photos did you submit?
Well, we brought them today and I brought them for you guys.
Thank you.
You can pass it around, here, Scott. I received the notice revoking the cannabis cultivation application and I was informed it was based on unauthorized grading as determined by planning staff. I was very disappointed as I believed that the staff has misinterpreted some satellite photos which had been provided with the notice. I believe that an explanation and further analysis of the facts will result in restoration of our application. In September 2015- In September 2015, Calgares County suffered the devastating effects of the Butte Fire, which also claimed my home on the property. One of the lasting effects of the fire that is present, presence of burned and dead hazard trees, which had become a serious threat to anyone working in the burn zone. As of June 2016, I removed a number of hazardous trees which were in and adjacent to the grow garden that staff had identified in photos prior to May 10th, 2016. Cal Fire has done at least one, if not two inspections on the property indicating that if I did not remove these hazardous trees, I'd be subject to fines. I removed the trees and I still have many more trees to remove, with the exception the fact that would not affect, that would not affect the pending application as it was solely tree removal and not grading of any kind. I have a number of photos that show the trees in question that are still on the site where no grading occurred. The area is relatively flat in our garden area, so I'm at a loss to see how any grading could affect, could benefit this area. A review of topographic maps that have data prior to May 2016 and today will clearly show no difference in elevations. Review of the site photos prior to May 2016 shows an abundant grass and low vegetation growth, which I've discovered and is also a prime snake habitat on my property. I made efforts to restrict vegetation growth and applied a herbicide that hopefully would make the area safer for all of us. Perhaps staff has misinterpreted its soil appearance as grading when in fact it's only the absence of low vegetation. I have a planning department inspection, I had a planning department inspection in June of this year. I had only five areas that required attention, which I have a copy and I hope you have a copy of as well. And the permit as of no grading occurred. Also, I indicated earlier that the site is highly conducive to cultivation because of the flat topography and adequate setbacks from any adjacent elements which pose adverse impacts. I've been very diligent to adhere to all the requirements set forth by the county. I've tried to follow both in the spirit and the letter of the law in order to be a good responsible neighbor and resident. I really believe that tree removal, which is required, whether I have cultivation permit or not, would not be determined as grading as a result in revocation of my application. Quite frankly, I feel as though the Butte Fire, I'm being victimized again in this situation. I would be happy to entertain another inspection to specify, to specifically show staff the scope of the tree removal and remaining hazard trees that I've yet to be able to remove this time. I have strived to be transparent, compliant from the very beginning. Please consider my application and restore it. And then I'm available for any questions as well as my vice president.
And I have a couple of things too, is some of the pictures that he sent of the property lines, I can prove that they're off.
They are off.
Because I drew a line off of the small garden and I did go the 150 foot by 100 foot. And when we did our registration form, they said that if you're going to be expanding, you have to pay, you have to do the 22,000 square foot now.
For the application.
Because of the application, because you're never going to be able to go up higher. So if you're ever going to do 22,000 square foot, you need to file for it. Now, even though you don't do the 22,000 square foot, you still got to pay the taxes on the 22,000. And the other thing is too, I understand what he was saying, but every tree stump that was there, I paid someone with a stump grinder to come over and grind the stumps down two inches underground. And I don't know if that's considered earth movement. I have all the wood chips, I'll show them where all the trees were.
And just to clarify, if you look back at, this photo right here does not accurately show the property lines. And I know that's not an issue because the only thing that was stated on our appeal was just grading. Out of 26 options the county had to deny us, it was just grading. But however, in his statement that he sent to us for his reason of denial, he mentioned property lines, but that was not stated. And as you noticed, when they did come do their full inspection, I had two inspections. Actually, I had the first one by Mr. Watt that was just here and then with Jason, also the fire, the new, the fire service member that you hired to come in and do the inspection of the hoop houses. We've passed all the inspections, no issues whatsoever. We responded back and we were waiting and we actually received a letter from the county stating that we will be accepted. And then after these aerial photos came about, now there's an issue.
And the other one is if you look at figure five of May 31st, 2016.
Can you change that to the May 31st, 2016 aerial photo, please?
No, you can't.
Well, no, not that one. We, in the packet that we received from the county, it shows figure number five and that is completely inaccurate based on where we've started, where the corner of our farm is.
Because if you actually look at that and then you bring up the police, the sheriff, it's not even close to, I mean.
Do you all have that, the packet actually? You see figure five?
Where she, yeah, where she had, right there, the property line for our neighbor, which is not the, not the line that they have again, but the other ones, that's.
Can you switch to figure five, please?
Is the laser pointer?
Oh, yes.
I didn't know I had.
I don't know if he has that.
Is this the photo you want on the screen or do you want figure five? We're on to five.
Figure five, please.
There's some trouble. Okay.
So the, I don't know how to work this. Our neighbor's yard, okay, these roads here are what the dozers put in when they came in through the.
Cal Fire.
For the Butte Fire. This right here is our neighbor's.
No, that's ours.
No, that's the neighbor's fence right there.
Oh, along where the actual photo is taken.
So what I did is I pulled a pin from here and then went 150 foot this way and 100 foot this way. And if, you can't really see it here, but there's an edge right here that goes, we're about 100 foot away from our neighbor's property. I found the marker pins. But that edge that he was talking about saying on the police photo, that has actually been a road, access road for years.
Between the two properties.
Even though you can't see it on this photo.
So if we go back to the figure three photo.
If you go back to the.
Right here, she's timed up.
Yeah, you'll see the road joining our property to the next property. And our marker pin is actually 350 feet away from our garden.
Okay. I don't think that that was the reason.
Yeah, that's not the, I mean, ultimately, but that's what he stated in his report was he had issues with that too, but that's not what we verified.
On the neighbor's property and the other property, and we're not.
And the other issue I just want to stay is.
That's why I was saying that it's wrong.
Well, code compliance didn't write you up for that either.
They didn't raise, exactly. That was my issue.
Okay. Did you have any more evidence you wanted to support or can we ask you some questions?
Do you want copies of my letter? Do you want copies of my letter that I just read or?
Yes, we do. We need to have that on the record. And then I have questions and I'm sure the other commissioners do as well. Do you want to start at that end and move this way?
If you look at the photos of August 20 and June 28th, August 20, 2016, June 28th, 2017, it shows a lot of bare dirt when there used to be vegetation.
Figure six.
And so the question is, how did it get to be bare dirt?
Spraying, sprayed a ton. There's stuff growing after the fire. It was moonscape right after the fire. I lost 90% of the property of all our trees we had. And it was moonscape, very unsafe, couldn't even walk around it. And then we sprayed and sprayed and sprayed. And then the new stuff that's growing in, which I showed evidence of, I don't know, I'm not an expert, they look like the manzanitas coming in, but they're, it's very unsafe. So we've been spraying and spraying and spraying. And I have a neighbor next to me that has done a great job and showed me how to do that because I'm concerned with consistent fire issues and this dry brush and five-foot tall star thistle that people have. And we have sprayed consistently to make sure of that. The pictures do not look good, I'll be honest, but I, again, we wanted to show pictures of the trees we removed and I still have many more burnt trees at my own expense that I have to take down.
So you didn't have any cats in there or road graders or backhoes pushing dirt?
No. All we did is I ran out there with a chainsaw and my pickup and tied a rope to it, cut the trees down, went out and rented a stump grinder and stump grinded the stumps down about two inches under the dirt so we can actually put pots in the water.
And we did a lot of that, obviously. I mean, and I still have to do more, unfortunately.
I had four weeks with a stump grinder.
Thank you.
Can you go to figure seven, please, Paul? So what you're saying is up there in the very top corner by where it says 2017 cultivation, none of that was done with a tractor, all that's done by spraying?
No. That's actually still a hillside.
It's flat, it's pretty flat there and then it drops off.
It actually slopes down.
It looks like a hillside.
That's why we're here too.
And that's also a lot of, you have to realize too, you can see the two pictures of the ATVs, plus I have a Polaris Ranger and we drive around there a lot because that's where we brought in the water. I mean, those are basically just, you can tell there's still road marks. You see the road marks where we're just driving around and you cannot, like I said, we can't drive around the other two sides where they had suggested there was a road put in there. That was not the case.
Mr. Watts actually did do, conducted an inspection. I've been texting with him. He's going to bring over some photos of the site so you can see from the ground what it looks like. He sent me a couple, but you can see when he brings them over.
Okay.
He's bringing them over now?
Yes.
Can I ask a question on this same issue?
Can you speak into your mic, please?
If you look at figure five, does that appear to represent correctly where your actual grow is, the sort of yellowish rectangle?
No, it does not.
No, sir. It's actually.
Overlapping.
It's overlapping because if you, I mean, it's hard because we don't have habit, but there's actually a water runoff that comes down right about here and then circles back and goes down.
All right. I'm going to watch very carefully. Could you use the lighted marker and show me where the upper corner, the correct corner?
The upper corner.
Is actually where their point is, actually, 2017.
Is about right here.
And the next corner?
And you got this corner and then this corner and then this corner.
All right, let's go to the upper part, the uppermost corner. No, the one that you say is the accurate one.
Oh, the accurate one is that one right there.
Well, upper on this picture, the highest part of that picture.
You mean to go to the top right hand corner?
Straight up.
Straight up.
The first corner that you identified.
Way up there.
No.
No.
This one?
The first corner that you identified as being the correct corner, not this picture.
Oh, there is, there is no correct corner because this is where I pulled from. I pulled from here and went 150 foot this way.
Where's your grow at now?
Your grow?
The grow? Well, they're saying the grow's here.
That's what we're asking, where is the grow?
It overlaps. It goes from that corner into the middle of the yellow, up to almost where it says the 2017 cultivation point and back down.
Right, so then point to the correct uppermost corner on that.
Up by the 2017.
Saying a point by the 2017. Right here is the farthest corner, comes in this way, down this way.
Go back, go back to the first one.
Go back.
So it's all the way onto that line. All right. So all that area appears.
Approximately based on aerial photo, yeah.
All of that area appears to be green vegetation to me. I, you know, that's what it looks like. Now, if we go over to the other shots, figure six, for example, or seven, there doesn't appear to be any vegetation whatsoever.
You're correct.
You say that's, let me finish. Your testimony so far is that that's from herbicides that you carefully sprayed, but just spraying weeds may kill them, but it doesn't get rid of them. How did you get rid of them? Did you scrape it?
Well, pre-emergent and then we weed eat it and we had rakes.
You weed eat it, using what?
Weed eaters.
Like your handheld weed eater.
Am I a McCloud from the fire department? That's the best thing to pull up a weed with.
From a McCloud.
Which is a hand tool, it's a rake.
Why would you have gone beyond the limit of your actual growth?
Because if there was another fire that broke loose with all the burnt stuff that already went through, it's going to go up like a candle and you ain't going to put it out.
On the very left of that, lower left, there's a road coming in that appears to be wider than it was in the other pictures, the pictures with the green.
That one right there? That is the one that Cal Fire did when they came in, when the fire came through, when the Butte Fire came through, they came through and was cut in a line. So we kept that road.
Remind me which year that was? That was.
Two years from now, sir.
16, wasn't it?
2015.
15?
2015 and then it poured down rain on us.
Like you've never seen. And they actually, Cal Fire came back on the property and said, did they want us to fix? I mean, I have tons of the burn mark from their excavators and from their, you know, just, there's marks all over the property. And I didn't feel I wanted them to come back and do extra work because it's, you know, I mean, we've lost everything.
If we could go back to figure five one more time. So you're saying that road that is covered up partly by the words 2016 cultivation?
You could barely get a small ATV through there before the fire and now you can get almost two trucks side by side due to the dozers.
My point is, that road in May of 16 doesn't appear, it appears to have plenty of vegetation and.
Yeah, and May.
He's not done talking.
Let me finish my thought. On the other shots in 17, it's completely devoid of vegetation. It's been scraped, it's been cleared. I can't imagine using weed eaters on a road. You don't get rid of vegetation just by spraying it, not just.
But we also had, we, as you can see, it looks like trees and there were trees and they were falling and they were hazard and we removed the trees.
Did you scrape the road?
I don't know about scraping a road, I don't know what that.
No, we didn't scrape the road with any blades. All we did is went off of the Cal Fire dozer marks and we kept it that way. They had a D6 that went through there and just dropped anything and everything that was in its way to cut a fire line.
And just to verify that, they did staging 300 yards away from my property. They were right there at the corner of Doe and Railroad Flat where they had over 200 personnel staying there as well as the dozers. And they, I had to continue to have them come out, clear, my house was burnt down on September 11th actually and the 12th. And they, I continually had to have them come out and put out flare ups. My average was four flare ups a day. I'd get up in the morning and drive around my property and I'd see a flare up and I had to call them and they'd have to come and continually work. They cut down trees, they removed boulders because the roots were still on fire two weeks after it burned my house down. It's devastating.
So this picture here was taken after Cal Fire widened the road?
Yes.
That, no, well, no.
Yeah, that was in 215.
Yeah, 2016 last year, correct.
Can you go to figure four, just because I think it's clearer for us to see the picture there? Well, you were on it. Back one more. No. Figure four is this? It's the same photo you had up without all the stuff on top. There you go. Now you can, no, one more back.
I'm sorry.
Ooh, I almost had to fire you. So now we can clearly see the road with all that yellow off the top. Now we can understand where your dead trees are that you cut down against the road is what I'm looking at. Because I can see where they're clearly dead all along this road area and then in front of where you were growing.
Yeah.
So I think where people are having an issue is that here's where you're growing. Great, Cal Fire said cut it all down and Cal Fire and dozers came through and cut fire lines. Thank you for that, we love them. And then you cut down all the dead trees because Cal Fire said you had to or the county came in and had people sign forms saying, we're cutting down your trees. We get all that, but then the grow expanded into that area. And I think that's the issue that your commissioners are looking at is going big expansion.
Okay, but here's the other issue. You can't see it. Number one, you can't see our fencing from this photo. We already had the metal fencing up and over here in this area, we had an abundance of plants we put directly in the ground that we did not use this style of the pots anymore and we did not use the, that actual, the white you're talking about that came up. It's, we have plants existing here that were pre-existing and that's, you can't see that from these photos.
What do you think the square footage was of that grow in 2015 before it burned down?
In that road?
This?
I think we were about 11,000 altogether.
Total.
Total.
Okay. And you applied for 22.
Correct.
And on May 10th, we didn't have 22, but we expanded after.
Well, no, we didn't even really.
We applied, we applied.
22,000, we applied for 22,000, but we never, like he said, we never actually did the 22,000 square foot.
And still haven't.
Okay, so, yes, you're paying taxes on 22.
Yeah, we're paying taxes on it, but we're not, we're not actually growing 22,000 square foot. We're still only like 11,000, 11 or 12,000.
Paul, what did you assess the grow at?
I'm sorry?
What did you assess that grow at?
That, you used a tool to measure around that, that was 34, 3400 square feet approximately.
That's not what it says in this.
And then within the new established grow area, there was 11,000.
Okay.
Including the hoop houses, just measuring the perimeters of the hoop houses and then the footprint of the, the footprint of the outdoor plants, you see there.
Because even in that photo, you can't even see the stacks of trees we had to remove that are piled up that we still have to chop up. Cause even in that photo, you can't even see the stacks of trees we had to remove that are piled up that we still have to chop up.
Well, I can see a stack of trees outside of that, uh, block that.
Down below and on the right side.
And then actually, if you, right here, you can actually see the second road that they have their mark going over.
What are you talking about?
Where?
If, if you go back to the yellow, it covers this little road right here.
What, they did their yellow and the blue? I think that's figure.
Okay.
Figure five?
It actually covers the road. Oh, you can't, all right. Oh, I was thinking of Zach's Road.
No, Zach's, yeah, that's Zach's Road right there. My neighbor's Road.
But if you, if you look at the sheriff's area, you can actually see a better picture of.
There's green coming back up.
Yeah, the green's coming back up and then all the burnt trees still, they're still standing that need to come down.
You've mentioned that you got a letter of compliance, acceptance.
It, it said it was pending. We got a letter about three weeks prior to this that said that they've received all our information, Mr. Watt. It didn't have somebody's signature on it, I don't have it with me, I apologize. We put it in the safe, do you have a copy of it?
Was that out of code compliance? It's saying that you fixed all your corrections?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so, and Mr. Watts is gonna be coming over here shortly and maybe he'll bring that with him or do you have a copy of that?
I don't have, I actually did not see the code inspection report. It wasn't in the file.
Can you turn your mic on, please?
I'm sorry.
No, I don't have a copy of that. I actually didn't see the code inspection report.
And there's actually email correspondence where he said, thank you for getting that done, thank you for getting that done, thank you for getting that done. Cause we met all the necessities.
And so there would have been no recommendation of denial, no complaint, so that didn't necessarily land as a hard copy in my file. I would imagine that was sent to us, it was probably an e-file, I'm, I'm not sure, it's in our office.
And also, just as a side note, based on the recommendations, I think, from the, the decision made two days ago from the supervisors, that we would actually be in compliant with their new restrictions as well. And we would be looking forward to meeting those expectations as well.
Oh, well, we don't even know what they're doing.
Sorry. Cause we are one of the few that you literally cannot see from the road. It's far hidden away. I, I don't like driving up and down 20 turns in Mount Ranch and seeing everybody's too, it's tough mix.
Okay, so, we are in limbo unless we.
Well, I've, I've got a question.
Okay, good, cause we're waiting for Mr. Watts.
Following up on some of Commissioner Bocelli's questions, it looks like you had quite a bit of vegetation there that had to get cleared out. And the question is, how did you get the dead vegetation off the property?
Well, when it was wet, well, there's still, the dead trees are still there. We, um, we were told to keep them there and somebody would come by and clean them up, which we're still waiting on that to happen.
They haven't done that.
Like the tall grass where we know that we can get through, we have a tractor with a lawnmower attachment on the back that we can set down and go and then we can spray it and then we can do pre-emergent and then it just kills everything and doesn't allow anything to grow back.
What about the brush? Didn't you have some brush?
The, well, the brush is all in the burn pile on the other side of the house.
How did he get into the burn pile?
With the tractor.
We weed-eated and then put it in a Polaris.
Yeah, with a fork that picks up the brush and then we go over and drop it and pull out.
Tractor or lawnmower?
Tractor.
Okay, cause he asked earlier if you had a tractor on the property, you said no.
No, it's actually our neighbor, Sosie.
He comes and helps us, moves stuff.
I asked if he had a cat or a grader or earth moving equipment. What they're telling us is they had a tractor with a fork which picks up brush.
Right.
But usually doesn't pick up much dirt.
Right, exactly. I, I'd like to have one, if you have one, I'll borrow it, that'd be great.
It has four forks on it that are about four foot long and you can just back up to it, picks up the brush, drive it where you want it, put it down, drive out underneath and the brush stays in the pile.
Got you.
Familiar with it? Okay, Commissioner Sisk, do you have any questions?
No.
Commissioner Bocelli?
No.
Okay. You've answered my questions, cause mine was, where did you get a letter of acceptance? What does it look like? And so we have, we're still waiting on Mr. Watts. I think that it's important that we hear from him. Is it okay with you if we just kind of table you for a little bit and we start on the next hearing? Cause we have a long ways to go and we can wait for him to come before we rule on yours, we'll go back to you.
Yeah, and the other thing is too, we have, uh, since we knew we were getting, that they denied us, we had everyone pull the plants off our property, so we were being compliant with you guys. Cause we don't wanna be in trouble.
Cause it said we can no longer cultivate.
Where's the plants at now?
We removed them off the property.
Did, you took, you physically took them off the property?
Yeah, cause we don't wanna be out of compliance. And we were actually the last ones who, we were probably the only ones the first year. We didn't even put a plant in the ground until we got your certification when we applied for it.
They weren't harvested, they were moved off the property?
Well, some were harvested, some were hooped and they just cut them down.
Took them and I don't know where they harvested them at or not, I mean.
Cause we, we wanna file with compliance. We don't want, it says you can no longer grow based on until, you know.
Did you show, did you bring any pictures showing that you have nothing growing on your property?
I have a picture now. I just wanna follow and make sure we, we're not, I mean, we wanna always make sure we rule by the book because. And I also wanna just add this sheriff's photo which we didn't receive until today. It shows that brush and greenery is all starting to come back completely around our entire area, you can see it.
Ethan, do you know how far out he is?
Uh, he's probably printing off the picture right now, please, can I see? So he has to testify on boom, who I believe is next anyway. So if you guys did wanna do boom, do whatever it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, uh, so you, you can move to boom and then table this one till the end of boom.
Could we possibly do our rebuttal before we table it?
I don't think so, I think I'd like all the evidence before we go to rebuttal. I think that would be fair enough. That's my, you agree?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. And I know if there's any public comment, we might wanna take care of that right now.
Yes.
Is the sheriff's picture down there someplace?
It's in your packet, isn't it?
Isn't it?
Yeah.
I think I gave the sheriff's photograph back to staff.
What's on the hill up above the property?
Uh, so you're looking at where we took down, yeah.
Like a warehouse?
No, that's actually where my house burnt down, it's a shipping container.
Oh, okay, okay.
My house was up above.
Okay.
Yeah, it's about 100 yards from my uncle's house.
Are you having a lot of issues with erosion? Is that what we were seeing in those photos?
Well, not.
Yeah, because the way, officer, the way that the hill is, it's flat up there, if you actually look at.
Well, I know Commissioner Wooster had pointed it out on that photo and, and it looks like it's erosion going on.
If you actually look at figure three.
Okay.
You'll see, you'll see the swimming pool and then if you go off to the right, to that corner, that's actually a flat area. We, there's actually, there used to be a house there.
You get the pointer?
No, I gave it there.
Okay. So on, on figure three, it says subject parcel and I still see a house and a pool, that didn't burn?
That, that's the one thing that we say, we lost two houses on the property. We lost one there and.
Here's where my house was right here, that's what you're seeing above the hill.
Okay.
And then we actually, this trailer here, this is why this is not accurate information. There's a trailer right here that we lost and our, and our property line actually is here. It actually comes down here and goes this way, so these property lines are not accurate. The survey was done, we just bought the property just before the fire.
That line's lining up with the road though, of above.
This one actually, you pull up to the house?
I think, I think we've recognized in the past that these are, um, some of them are more often than others and, but we did not rely on, on this. This is just representation of what's out there based on our aerial imaging and, and the property line was not an issue.
Nobody said they're on a property, yeah.
No, but we just wanted to show you how much we had damage that went around.
So would it be okay with you if we take public comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you think it's appropriate to take public comment without the additional evidence? That wouldn't be.
Uh, no, I think so, yeah, you can do that.
All right, we'll go ahead and take public comment then. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say?
Yeah, just clarification, Colleen Blatt, My Valley Springs. Um, I thought the basis of the appeal, or the denial, excuse me, the basis of the denial was grading and earth moving for new cultivation area and expansion, not just that there was grading and earth moving, but it was for the purpose of expansion or moving and that the original cultivation area was 3,400 square feet. But the applicants are saying that we were at 11,000 square feet in 2016 based on figure four, so that's a big discrepancy of what the actual cultivation area was in 2016, so that, isn't that the basis of the issue?
And I think that's why we were asking questions about what they were growing before and after because they were still pointing out areas that they were growing under the brush. Cause we have to remember they weren't allowed to permit and a lot of people were growing under brush.
Right, so that hasn't been established then that they were growing 11,000 square feet?
Yeah, and I think that's kind of why we were waiting for code compliance to get here so we could see a sign of what he seen unseen.
Is that gonna reflect what was there in 2016 though?
Don't know.
Oh.
I don't know.
Cause all we, you know, all we've seen are something that just says 3,400 square feet, so.
Right.
That was my main concern is that, did it really move and expand?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any further public comment? Okay, seeing none, I think what we're gonna do is just kind of postpone continuing with this, go to the next hearing. You're also doing the presentation? And we're gonna put your hearing on hold just temporarily until we can get everything on the record. Okay, great. Pardon me?
Can we sit outside there or sit in there?
There's a fee for sitting out there, but yeah. Can you please ask Commissioner Ladish to come back in? Thank you. Good idea. Darn it, I missed him. Why don't we? Why, why don't we just take a 15-minute break and get everything together here? We're missing it, Commissioner. Okay, so we're gonna call the meeting back to order. We are gonna stay on track with the CNS Wellness and Health Group. We're not gonna jump to the next one. I think we're finished asking you questions for the moment and I think what we would like to do is bring Mr. Thomas up. And you got a copy of all of this? Okay, good. Watts, I'm sorry, I said Thomas.
That's all right, either works.
You can. Either works? Well, see, that's good, I'm all right. Okay, um, I don't, do you wanna start, Mr. Wooster? Do you have questions that you'd like to ask him? No, Commissioner Sisk?
I just wanted, did you notice that there was any grading done on the property when you were there?
Um, the property's been cleared, but I don't remember any excess, excessive earth movement.
No excessive earth movement?
No.
Except it cleared falls under.
Okay.
We've been trying to focus on whether they had used scrapers or bulldozers or any heavy equipment beyond weed eaters.
And beyond what Cal Fire did during the fire?
To, to scrape the area where the plants were located and/or the driveway, a road.
From memory, um, I can't recall seeing any major kind of like caterpillar tracks or anything like that. It was just a flat, open pad. There was, I think there was grass starting to grow back. It had just been stripped of trees and bushes and what have you.
And when were you last there?
Whenever this inspection was, uh, 5:30 this year.
Of this year?
Yeah.
Did you check to see if the location of this grow is the same or similar to what they showed on their original application?
Uh, no, I didn't check that.
Can you, so you were out there on 5:30, but at the top, it says 5/16/17. At 8:40, there was a voicemail. Does that say complaint or compliant?
Uh, complaint.
Complaint?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and then, so after 5:30, they indicated that they got a letter stating that they were cleared and that they complied with all of these.
Yeah, so the same day of the inspection, I issued a correction notice, um, which should be included there in the packet. Every, uh, yeah, everything was corrected. They're still just waiting on the, the final for the hoop house permits.
Okay. When was everything corrected?
I don't have that information here.
Okay, but it would have been within the 10 days?
Um, yeah.
Okay. And the only thing they're waiting for is their permits on the hoop houses, which that's in process? We know for sure they've applied?
Yeah, I checked the permit just before I came over.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay.
What does the May 16th, 17th complaint mean?
Um, I don't know what that complaint was, but obviously we received some sort of complaint about the property.
Like a neighbor had complained or something?
It could have been a neighbor, it could have been somebody driving past. It could have just been somebody based on, you know, like Google Earth images.
Were you at the site at any other time prior to May 30th of this year?
No, that's the only time I've been there.
What would be the, the reason for writing complaint on there and documenting the time via voicemail without documenting what it was? Is that common?
Yeah, it is quite common. The complaint would have been available. Sometimes a complaint comes in and we prepare the inspection report. We can do, complaint inspections can be a bit different to a, like a compliance inspection.
Okay, so you would have gotten a phone call on the 16th, what, which you pulled this file and went out on the 30th to follow up on that complaint, possibly?
Um, possibly, yeah. I honestly can't remember what the complaint was.
Okay. All right. Okay. Yeah, when it's rebuttal time, you got it. Everybody gets to talk first, you get to go last. Okay. Okay, does anybody have any further questions?
No.
Okay, no, no? All right, thank you very much, appreciate all your time. We'll see you in just again a little bit. Um, okay, so, Paul, you wanted to do some rebuttal?
Yes, there's a couple of points I'd like to bring up. I think I'll start with the evidence photos that they just submitted, submitted to us. And I'm looking, mostly what I'm looking at here is E and B. And you can see, we've got, um, a couple of, you know, we've got, we've got big, big piles of trees down right here, okay? I would imagine, I don't, you know, I would assume this was taken on the, within the area we're talking about that has been cleared. And it is just really hard for me personally to comprehend somebody getting in there between June 9th and August 20th in the middle of the summer, cutting this up by piece and piece, piece by piece and hauling it out. Or even with the aid of a lift on a, on a, on a hoe of some type, you know, lifting all of this up and taking it out. I, it just does not seem practical to me in the middle of the summer.
In your photos, those piles are still there?
In my photos, those piles are still, well, they weren't there after that was done right there. I mean, this is to, to the point that the site was cleared, okay? Between, I think it's.
I don't think so, I think there's.
Between June 9th, between June 9th and August 20th, we can see that corner is cleared out. This is when this happens, okay? It happens in, from June 9th to August 20th. That's when they went out and basically, um, put the herbicide down, killed the plants and then hauled this all out, either with the aid of a lift mechanically for maybe the brush and, and some of these trees. But everything else was physically carried out, you know. They used McClouds to cut it down, haul it all out. You're talking over an acre in the middle of the summer. That, I have a hard time comprehending. The other thing is.
So Paul, if you just. So Paul, if you just, just for record, if you go to figure seven, which is, you can see all that lumber stacked up right there.
No, I understand. It got moved. The point is, how, how, how did it move?
Yeah, he's, he's trying to direct your attention to the difference between the June ninth and the August twentieth picture.
Yeah, there's no doubt that all of this was taken off the site. I'm just saying, how was that done?
They said they used a neighbor's tractors with forks.
No, I understand that. I, I, I just, I just don't see how you could clean it up that well with some forks. I just really am having a hard time.
Oh, stump beaters, pulling trees over, stump, stump grinders.
Very good.
Yeah, I, I think, Paul, is, the implication that Paul is trying to arrive at is that it looks like that the, those piles of stumps and root balls were pushed, likely by a large piece of equipment.
Yeah. The other thing, and they may have brought with them today, there are pictures that were taken more recently, possibly. I mean, we've, we've come forward with these code photographs, but it's interesting, and they may have them, they may have photographs that were, that, that's from, that's from code.
May of this year.
Yeah, right, right. But I'm just curious if they might have some other photographs that might show further, you know, proof of what was going on in the site. It's interesting that these came from code, and the complaint being the grading, that they didn't bring, you know, photographs themselves, they brought these. The other thing I wanted to talk about is the juxtaposition. We're talking about whether the site moved, and, let this pointer work in here. You can see the road up here, and you can see the two thousand and sixteen cultivation down here. And get a pretty good feel, get a pretty good eye for the distance between those two. And, whoops, let me go back. The distance is approximately the same, and the other grow area is sandwiched between the road and the two thousand and sixteen cultivation area. They're saying this is actually sitting on top of that. But the juxtaposition doesn't change. So I would argue that this is the correct representation, and that, and that big yellow rectangle we see right there is not actually, in reality, their, their new grow area didn't occur over this. Because otherwise, if, let's just say, this rectangle here, actually, we move this whole top side down to this side, and sit that whole thing here, the distance from here to there would be much, much bigger. There's, this just doesn't figure with me.
Can you still move it back to the picture?
Forward. Yeah, and there you can see, you know, there's the road. That's where it's at.
Go back one more time. You can see clearly that the road parallels the edge of the, of the yellow rectangle, and there is no difference in distance between the yellow rectangle that Paul drew, and the grow site as depicted here. So the yellow rectangle absolutely correctly depicts the size of the grow site relative to the other two roads that are visible in both pictures.
So the cultivation area was moved, and I would say that it was also expanded.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Paul?
Yes. Let's, let's assume that the cultivation area was moved, at least in part. Let's further assume that under any definition, there was no grading or earth moving to accomplish that. Is that moving the grow in that fashion? Does that violate the urgency ordinance? And if so, how, how does it?
It seems to me that they, they went from thirty-five hundred to twenty-two thousand square feet, so it's, it sounds, or twenty-one thousand, according to Mr. Watts's measurement. So it seems to me the implication of your question is, where in the ordinance does it say that you can't expand your grow site, the square footage of it, as long as you're not grading?
Correct. And as long as you signed up for twenty-two thousand square feet, you pay taxes on twenty-two thousand square feet, you don't, there's nothing in the urgency ordinance, unless you can show it to me, that says if you didn't plant twenty-two thousand square feet to start with, you can't get to twenty-two thousand.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. I, I suppose that the, we have generally argued that the purpose of the urgency ordinance was to stop cultivation where it was at, and that expansion passed the May tenth deadline was prohibited. And here we have an expansion from thirty-five hundred to twenty-two, twenty-one thousand. And, and it sounds to me like you're saying you believe that unless there was grading, that's permissible. And, Peter, you got, you got a, can you help me out here?
Well, the, I mean.
Well, I, I would agree with, with Ethan, and I'm.
Well, the actual, the actual denial letter in this hearing is about the claim of moving earth.
That's true.
So even if moving the site, it violates UO, which I don't think it does, as long as it's under the twenty-two thousand. I think the only question is whether they graded or moved earth. And I, I'm looking at a lot of pictures, and it sure looks at first like they graded. One picture I saw a little bit ago, it shows the actual site, makes it, shows to me that it's a pretty flat site, just like they claimed. It also looks very smooth, like something smoothed it out. I'm not quite sure that's what we meant, or the word of supervisors meant, when they talked about grading or moving earth.
Yeah.
Certainly, certainly if he was doing terraces, like we've seen in many cases, that's a violation. This one, again, as I first look at the maps, and I see green becoming tan, it looks like a major violation. And then when we look up close and personal, I'm not so sure it is.
Just to follow up on Commissioner Worcester's question, we believe in having sat through all the hearings with the board, that the intent of the ordinance was to freeze cultivation, what was there, or, and what had been prepared, because given the time of year, not all the plants were on the ground. But the idea was to, you know, stop any additional grading, other than that which was necessary for the proportional adjustment to meet the setback requirement. And we talked about that at length during the hearings. Unfortunately, it's not exactly what the ordinance says, and it is restricted to grading. And so we've had to rely on that in order to apply what we believe was the intent of the, the ordinance. I know there was some, I believe, misrepresentation on the part of individuals assisting, not staff, but outside people assisting applicants, to say, oh, write down twenty-two thousand, because if you want to grow that, you can do it, but only if you write down that much. No, the, and what we were telling them was, you have to write down what you were, had already prepared, or were, had previously cultivated. But a lot of people wrote down twenty-two thousand square feet, even though they had not cultivated that much, under the impression that they could expand their cultivation. I would have to agree with Commissioner Worcester, though, that the strict reading of the language of the code itself does not say that you cannot expand the cultivation. I do firmly believe that that was not the intent of the ordinance, but I think if we have to go with the letter of the law, then if there was no grading occurred, that occurred, and that's the interpretation of this commission, that if, only if grading were to occur, that was not permitted under the ordinance, but if you registered for twenty-two thousand, and you could place it on the ground without doing any grading, then that was permissible.
Let me finish off the thought. The sheriff's picture is interesting, because it shows how flat it is, and it's also got dark spots, which appear to coincide with where the trees were located. And they were supposedly stump ground, is that a word, grind, grind the stumps? But it's all nice and smooth and flat. Well, how did that get to be so flat? Well, it must have been rolled, or graded, or scraped, or both. Again, I'm not so sure it's meeting the letter of, the definition of grading and earth moving. It's darn close. So, I don't know what that says. There's only one of these. Has everybody seen it?
It's up on the screen now.
Is that it?
The same picture.
Okay, there we go.
Let's go to rebuttal. I'm sure what you have to say.
If you don't mind, I'd like to add one more point on what Peter was talking about regarding.
Sure, come on up while he's talking.
Uh, Worcester's question. Commissioner Worcester, I, I think that in looking at the code itself, in the evidence requirements, in seventeen down nine-five, I think it's one-six-five, I don't have it in front of me, you have to show evidence of cultivation and/or grading commensurate with the area to be applied for. And it seems like implication from those evidence requirements are that, prior to May tenth of two thousand and sixteen, you have to have been cultivating an area commensurate to that which is being applied for. So if you were only growing thirty-five hundred square feet prior to May tenth, two thousand and sixteen, I don't see how you can prove, or that there ever could be any proof, that you were ever cultivating the twenty-two thousand square feet that was applied for.
Well, suppose you had a greenhouse full of clones. You were cultivating commensurate with twenty-two thousand square feet, but they were little bitty plants.
Yeah, then you could just spread them out across an ungraded area.
True. I mean, there's no denial here, based on a failure to show grading or cultivation commensurate with the area proposed to be cultivated.
Well, I agree. I, I just wanted to address the issue, because.
I understand.
I just wanted to make an additional point, that based on even the photos that Thomas Watts had, had given, you can tell with the photograph here, with the highway patrol car, that there's a slope, and you see the green, you see the grass is already coming up continually that we deal with. And also, on the last photo, you can see that it's a sloped property as well, just slight, slightly, so it's not completely flattened. And also, based on his report, he even stated that we're only at approximately ten thousand, and we wanted to make sure that, you know, that's, we're paying much more than that, and giving our more than fair share back to the county with the taxes. And that is definitely not flattened around the site there. I'm going to stop you for one second. What are you talking about ten thousand? Because he's showing your whole area is twenty-one thousand, nine forty-five.
Well, he is here on the cannabis grow site, and down here where it says ninety-seven by a hundred and seven.
Yeah.
Is that what he's saying, that?
And he measured several areas, nine by seventy-four, he measured seven, several areas, totaled them up, and it came up to twenty-one, nine forty-five.
And we're still, but we're still only at eleven thousand of plants, eleven thousand square foot of plants.
Fenced area, what's your fenced area?
Our fenced area is a hundred by a hundred and fifty, so it's a little bit underneath the twenty-two thousand square foot.
Because that's the area he's measuring.
Because I didn't want to bring the fence up higher and be on a hillside that the.
Bear with me for one second. If I'm looking at that picture, and that's twenty-two thousand square feet fenced, it's pretty filled in. How does that equate to eleven thousand? I'm having a real issue. There should only be half-filled in at that point.
It doesn't, obviously, from that photo, it doesn't show. They actually come out with the measuring, and only measure exactly where the plants are. So there's, we, we could fill that in way more, but we're trying to have a nice, organized agricultural plant site.
Okay, but per the ordinance, it's going to be the fence cultivated area space is counted in the square footage, right?
No, we were told it was the actual plants. And now I'm hearing people that are expanding their fence lines beyond that, because they don't have twenty-two thousand square feet of plants. I'm just letting you know what we're hearing. But we, we're not doing that.
For clarification, the, the area that we would consider the cultivation would be, these individual greenhouses, the hoop houses, the square footage of each of those would be considered. And then this entire area from here, over to here, if I got some plants in there, that would all be considered cultivation. We include the area between the plants, because they're going to continue to grow. And a lot of, of the applicants have said, well, those don't count, it's just the canopy. No, the way it's, it's defined is includes the space between the plants. So not all the way to the fence, but from the, the exterior boundary of the canopy of the, of the plant area. So that would be counted, and that would be counted. Since it's under the twenty-two thousand, I mean, the whole area is about twenty-two thousand, we're not concerned about the canopy area at this point.
I'm just looking, okay, so you have more rebuttal? I don't want to interrupt you, I'm sorry.
He had a question about the big trees being on the side, right there on the edge.
Yes.
Those trees were so big, I, I barely got them to where they were at. I pulled them over with my truck.
Are they still there?
They're still there.
They haven't been, we were told they're going to be removed, and I have other trees throughout my property.
Is that the pile right down below?
Uh, that's some, and then right along the edge is actually, you see where that road, that he said is a roadway, behind the fence? That's actually a cliff drop-off, and that's where all the trees are, just there.
They push them off.
That's where those pictures came from.
Down by the word July, down by where it says July?
Down by July is, those are the photos I took, and then you can see above the, in the corner there, where we were talking about, go above July, about an inch and a half or so. Go further, right there, those are all the huge piles of trees that, we were told were going to become, be removed, and I have other trees throughout my other thirty acres that they've never come to remove either.
Those are a lot of trees to haul.
A lot of trees, big trees.
Okay.
My truck didn't like moving them.
So, I got a question, follow-up. I'm looking at that picture, I, I talked earlier that I see these dark areas that appear to coincide with the locations of trees, that you said you pulled over and then ground the stumps. Am I right, others?
Yes.
So how did you get from pulling out, or grinding, and then smoothing it out? How did you smooth out the dirt?
Well, what I did, I mean, the stump grinder will go down two inches below dirt and get the stump down. The stumps that you see in those pictures, those are all what Cal Fire pulled out, that I had to pull over and put in the burn pile, because I couldn't move them. The, the tree stumps that I grinded, went two inches down, and then we just raked it over with dirt.
Raking by hand?
Raking by hand.
Tractor and I have a ranger.
And then a lot of, a lot of dirt, what I can do to get it smooth, is I'll get a chain link fence on the back of the ranger, and put some weights on it, and just sit there and go around and around and around until.
I wasn't going to ask about that.
To smooth it out.
I was waiting for that one.
So, I mean, I don't want to give up all my secrets.
Yeah.
But no, that's how you get, you can get a dirt field flat, is get a chain link fence, put weights on it, and just keep going around and around.
Okay, any more rebuttal?
I'm just trying to answer the questions.
I know, and I appreciate you for your time. Okay, thank you. Okay, I think we're going to close the hearing. Nobody had any public comment on new information, correct? Just to make sure. Okay, we're to close the hearing. Bring it back to the commissioners for deliberation, and I think there's some really heavy heads here right now.
That was good, until he told me he was a chain link fence, but the thing, isn't that considered grading?
No, because he's spreading mulch. We've had to deal with that with tree mortality as well, the burn scars, and it's a dollar bit, too. But, I got a technicality in there, so I agree that it's, it is and it isn't, I guess, in my opinion.
It's not dirt, mulch, tree mulch. He didn't haul in dirt, he didn't move dirt. I'm just.
It, it looks like he did, and yet, once we get into the closer-in pictures and the explanations, which I think makes sense, I don't think it really was grading or earth movement, as it's used in the language of the UO. It may not meet what we thought the UO said, or was intended to say, but I.
What about expansion?
Well, we've decided apparently that expansion commensurate, is that the right word? We haven't had a commensurate case in a while.
[laughing]
We did months ago, but I, it is definitely under the twenty-two thousand limit.
There's a lot of expansion.
From thirty-four hundred to twenty-two thousand is what it looks like. But was he cited for that?
Nope, and he wasn't cited for grading either, the box isn't checked.
I think, I think we're limited to what the denial letter says, am I right? The basis of the denial? The basis of the denial.
I'm not, I'm not sure that the planning commission is completely limited by the denial letter. What's happened in the past is there's been a question about whether, if there is additional evidence that would show violation of the urgency ordinance, the commission would ask the appellant if they've had enough time to prepare a defense of the new, the new basis that you're coming up with. And it would, you would be able to consider it as long as they have enough time to prepare a defense to whatever the new basis of denial was. It's about notice and preparing a defense. But I don't think you're forbidden from coming up with a new basis of denial if the evidence shows that.
This language sucks.
If we uphold his appeal, could the planning department then go back and get him for commensurate violation?
Well, I think they sort of go hand in hand here. And, you know, the only place that I can recall where the word expanding or expansion is, is in one sixty-five N seven, which is a section on grading, which is why that section was checked. So there has to be a connection between expansion and, and grading. The provision about commensurate is under N three, date-stamped photographic evidence of grading and/or earth-moving commensurate with the area proposed to be cultivated or date-stamped photographic evidence of cultivation commensurate with the area proposed to be cultivated. So, again, that was intended to say, show us what you were doing before or had prepared for cultivation, already prepared. And that was the area that you needed to document that that was, I mean, that was, that was our methodology that we had come up with to say, show us that you were already, had prepared the site or had cultivated in years past, commensurate with that which you have, you are applying for. It didn't strictly say, and there should be no additional expansion. But that was the implication that we felt was clear. You know, it's always twenty-twenty hindsight when you write an ordinance, is how people are going to interpret it. It seemed clear at the time that the intent here was that you got what you had on May tenth, and you had to stop at that point.
Well, in this case, we have a photograph dated April twenty-eighth of 2016 of what appears to be a rather large number of small marijuana plants. Now, let's just assume that, that there's enough plants there to create twenty-two thousand square feet of canopy. We have no way of knowing, and the application was not denied on that ground. But if you assume the case in which an applicant submitted photographic evidence of cultivation of little plants sufficient to create a canopy of twenty-two thousand square feet and had a site that wasn't graded, there was no earth moving, and no grading or earth moving ever took place because it didn't have to, because it was completely flat, it's hard for me to see how this ordinance prohibits that applicant from taking those little plants out to that site and growing them. I don't see, see it. Now, it may well be the intent to freeze the activity as of May tenth. And if you weren't growing at that site with that canopy, you can't expand it. But the way this ordinance is written, it seems to me, is not fair notice to applicants that that's true, that that's the rule. If you're looking at it from the standpoint of the public, trying to understand how this urgency ordinance works and who didn't attend all the supervisors' meetings, it seems to me that this ordinance does allow expansion as long as you don't have grading or earth moving and if you meet the commensurate requirement, which is a completely separate requirement. I know, I'm not seeing a violation here. I don't think there's sufficient evidence of grading or earth moving, by which I mean moving dirt, not grass, not brush, not trees. And I don't think filling in stump holes qualifies.
Commissioner Sisk?
I'm thinking, I'm thinking. I'm kind of seeing what Kelly's saying. But on the other hand, who's to say that those plants in that picture weren't supposed to go back into this original cultivation site that they're showing? We have no way of knowing that. Because this just shows empty pots, I believe. I don't see anything in the pots.
Commissioner Vachelli, while she's looking through her photos and
I, I would agree with Mr. Worcester's descriptions. I was leaning the other way. But after thinking about the actual process of spraying the herbicide and not really doing any significant movement of earth, I don't think the applicant violated what he was cited for. So I will uphold his appeal.
This is probably one of the harder ones. I sat here and looked through the ordinance and through the language and through the language and through the language. The only thing that I'm struggling with is the expansion because I can see where they had their grow. And then I can see where they could say, I was growing under these trees, fine. But the expansion area is now into where the trees burned and were removed. So they weren't growing there before because the trees were there. It's, the expansion is where I'm having an issue. It's not the clearing, it's not moving dirt. I think I'm okay with that. And so I was trying to go through here and read on the expansion. And it's really odd because whenever we have these appeals come before us, we've been able to rule on these pretty easily because we can see earth moving. On this one, it's dead trees that were removed, rather, they removed them, Cal Fire removed them, the county contract removed them. It was still in the process of removal, but they weren't growing where that tree was. And now they are. So I'm having a hard time with the expansion. But also, as I go through the ordinance, this is the first time that it, it hit. I know what the intent was. My problem with the intent is that I have ruled multiple times telling people standing before us, I'm not ruling on intent. I'm ruling on black and white. So now I'm eating my words here because there's definitely an expansion that happened. But I don't have the language to highlight that says that it was wrong. Yeah. I don't know. I, I just, it's the language ain't there. I, I have to rule black and white because that's what I've always said.
It's not black and white. I think that's the issue. It's, I agree with what Mr. Worcester said to a point, except for I cannot prove how many plants were there in this one picture. Was that enough? Or there was, there was obviously, to me, there's obviously expansion. This amount of plants could fit in this area either.
There's no argument that there's expansion. I agree with you. There is expansion. Even they'll tell you there is expansion. But we don't have language that says they can't expand unless they, but the reason we've denied in the past is because of grading. That didn't happen, and the language isn't there. You're thinking hard.
I have a question for the planning director, which is, if, if this commission determined to grant this appeal, then this application would be processed further, I take it?
Yes.
And do you believe it would be within the planning director's authority to question whether this application meets the requirement of N three at that point? And perhaps to issue a second denial based on failure to provide evident, date-stamped photographic evidence of either cultivation or earth-moving commensurate with the area proposed to be cultivated?
An off-the-cuff review of the information that I've seen would indicate that they satisfy that requirement.
Thank you.
Well, when I read in, it just, it, the maximum total canopy area that is or will be on the cultivation site, that's the killer. It's, it's black and white. You can't change that language. There may have been intent, but the intent isn't in the ordinance.
Well, as I think, as I mentioned before, the, the people who are subject to this ordinance, which are the people who wish to grow cannabis, seems to me are entitled to rely on what it says too.
I agree, because we've told that to many, 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 many people.
And so it's not fair to me to say, well, the ordinance didn't really tell you this, but we know what the intent was, and so you're, you're denied. I don't think that's fair.
I agree. Okay, so we have a little dilemma here because I think that we have a polling going on of three and a half. And I was waiting for that fourth, but it, I only gave you a half, Karen. So it sounds like polling the commissioners that we're going to need to rewrite the resolution because we're not going to uphold the finding. Okay, so we are going to, I think, stop that. What do you want to do with this? Talk to us.
I think you would need to vote. And then after voting, I think that planning would need some time to devise a resolution that conforms with your vote. But I don't think we should have them writing the resolution until he knows for sure what your decision is.
And I think there's two ways we could do that. We've got a couple other hearings before us still that it's possible we can bring it back at the end of the meeting or we could just continue it to the next meeting and bring back a final resolution to conform with the direction provided.
Okay, I, I think what, if, if we could continue on with the hearings, because I think, what do we have, two left?
Yeah.
Great. I'd like to continue on with the hearings, and we're already at three o'clock. We've got three hearings left. We probably should continue the vote to the next meeting. It'll be real quick and easy.
Well, I think it'd be probably good, just so the appellant knows what the final action is, is to take the vote
Right.
And with the, you know, with the direction that we come back with the final, either at the end of the meeting, and if we can do that during another break, if we have one, or we'll just bring it back in the next meeting and put on consent.
That works. Okay, so would somebody like to make a motion?
I make a motion to grant the appeal.
Need a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we have three to one. Okay, so with that, I don't know if you understand what we just did, but your appeal's been upheld. And they are going to draft the words for your resolution, showing it upheld, but we're not going to be able to vote and formally sign that document for two weeks. But at this point, you know that you're, get to continue. Does that work? Okay. All right, thank you.
One week or two weeks.
Well, we'll bring it back in the next meeting.
Would you do us a favor and bring Commissioner Lattish back in for us?
The second. Yeah, we'll bring it back on the second.
Oh, did you get that date? November second?
I got it.
Oh, I thought you left.
No, he, he went to get it too.
Okay, thank you.
And again, this action, well, I guess the action will be final next, on the second, so.
So you, if, you do, you will have an appeal right, even though they're writing a resolution that grants your appeal. You don't like the language. Once they issue that resolution at whatever, what is the meeting that we're coming back?
The second.
November second. You would have fifteen days after they adopt that resolution to appeal its language to the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, so moving on to item number six, appeal by Leslie Boone and the planning director's denial. Paul, are you also doing that one?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Nice to see you. All right.
They need to turn the air conditioner back on.
Are you the appellant?
I'm Leslie Boone.
Okay, can you sit right there up front? And when he's done with his presentation, we'll go ahead and call on you. Thank you. Just want you to stand while they do their presentation.
Okay, this is appeal number two zero one six seven eight two. Leslie Boone is appealing a denial of commercial cannabis registration by the planning director. Reasons for denial, there were three reasons for denial of this project. First was the application pending certificate was not properly posted at the cultivation site. Second is the registrant failed to provide continuous fencing with locked access gates around the cultivation area. And the final reason is the registrant engaged in grading and earth-moving on the parcel after May tenth, two thousand sixteen, for the purpose of establishing the cultivation area. Site location, ten acres at six fifty Blossom Lane. That's outside Railroad Flat. It's in Township Five North, range thirteen east to section nine. And it's roughly about five miles from Blossom. I think this is Russian Hill Road and up Railroad Flat, well, road up to Railroad Flat. Let's see. On July sixth, two thousand sixteen, the applicant Leslie Boone filed commercial cannabis cultivation registration for twenty-two thousand square feet of mixed-lite cultivation area. And that's the application pending that was approved for her. This is a code-based denial, too. The complaints are code-based. And one of those is a failure to meet the requirements of section seventeen ninety-five one sixty-five N ten, which is fencing and locks. And that reads, "An outdoor or mixed-lite cultivation area shall be fully enclosed by a six-foot-tall fence of a material in strength that reasonably prevents against access by trespassers and children. Access to the cultivation area shall be secured by a lock of reasonable strength to prevent against access by trespassers and children." On April twentieth, Thomas Watts from Calvaris Code Compliance went out to the site to inspect it. What he found out there was a fence under construction around the cultivation area. As such, in many areas, there was actually no fencing erected. And also, fencing wasn't up. It wasn't complete. There were not gates, and therefore, there were not locks. So no fence, no locks. The second thing that Mr. Watts noticed out there was a violation of section seventeen ninety-five one sixty-five I, and that has to do with posting. And that reads as follows, "The current registration document issued by the planning department must be weatherproof and visibly and clearly posted within ten feet of the ingress of the cultivation area. Must be posted between four and six feet above the ground on a rigid, durable, and rectangular signboard and no less eighteen inches per site containing reflective material sufficient to allow an law, an enforcement official to readily locate it with a flashlight after dark. The parcel street address shall also be posted in conformance with section twelve seventy-four point zero nine of Title fourteen of the California Code of Regulations." I don't have a picture up there to show you these two items because they weren't posted. But I thought it would include a couple other pictures of what was going on out at the site. I believe this is in the cultivation area. You can see earth that was previously used for cultivation. This over here is cannabis that's actually growing on the site on that date, on April twentieth. 20th, and it's unsecured. The final reason for denial by code was trash, junk, debris spread out over the site. Let's see here. After, after inspecting the site on May 10th, Mr. Watts issued a ten-day notice to correct the appellant. On that same day, May 10th, the appellant acknowledged, received the notice. Twelve days later, nine photographs were provided as proof of corrections. Those were reviewed by code, and it was determined that the address had been properly posted in, the debris, junk, trash, and such had been removed from the site. However, there was no proof that the fencing had been completely installed. There were locks, there were gates, and there was no credible proof of that. The registration had been posted. So on May 24th, Mr. Watts asked the appellant to provide further proof, provides some more photographs showing those corrections. However, no further proof of corrections came. In addition to the code violations, there is the standard May 10th violation for grading after May 10th, and I read that before in the last complaint, but I'll read it again. As of May 10th, this, excuse me, this is section seventeen ninety-five one sixty-five and seven. As of May 10th, all grading and earth movement on portion of the parcel to be used for cultivation shall have been completed, other than that grading necessary for proportional adjustment to the cultivation area to comply with the setback requirements of this chapter. Registrant seeking to conduct grading for this purpose beyond May 10th, 2016, must provide the planning department with a copy of a current grading permit for this proportional adjustment at the time of submitting his or her application for registration. No additional grading or earth moving for the purpose of establishing or expanding any commercial cannabis cultivation site shall be permitted after May 10th, 2016. So, on June 30th, the appellant, June 30th, 2016, the appellant presented this plot plan you see on the screen up here with their application. It's kind of dark up there. But what they showed on the, on the plot plan was, it's roughly a square site, rectangular site. This is the grow area right here, and I think on this side, they're noting eighty-nine feet clear to the property line. Over here, it's eighty-four. And then just visually, you can see there's quite a distance on these other, the other three sides to the property line. So it appears what they're showing us there, that there is no conflict with the setback area, and there's no indication of proportional adjustment with the plot plan that they submitted. This, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna flip you guys over. This is the way the plot plan was submitted, and all the writing was put in, in this manner. So I decided to present it as submitted. This is actually south. We're gonna flip the site, and the top will now be north, and that's the rest of what you'll be seeing here. So this is county aerial taken June 2nd, 2017. The cultivation area is down on this end of the property now, and that is our subject parcel. We're gonna look at enlargements of that area. This is a Google aerial taken May 31st, 2016, and it'll show you basically the cultivation they had in place as of May 31st, 2016, right in there. We'll do an overlay really quick, and you can see the blue basically outlines the cultivation area of 2016. That's approximately twelve thousand and nine hundred square feet. The pink area you see on both the right and left sides is what we're gonna see when we get to 2017. So this is 2017, Google aerial, June 28th, and you can see it has expanded the trees that we saw before. See trees sitting in the middle of this. Those have all been taken out. This area has been graded out. Basically, all the earth has been pushed this direction. There's a large fill slope down here. And you'll see, again, this is our expansion, the pink areas. That's approximately fifty-four hundred square feet of expanded cultivation area. And again, the fence going around, it's, doesn't appear that the fence is continuous, at least the screening on the fence. You will be able to see this a little clearer. This is a sheriff's office aerial on June 19th, 2017, and I believe that I didn't have this in your staff report. I referenced it, but it wasn't included. So this may be the first you're seeing of it. I don't believe that was-
Yeah, it's in there.
Was it in there?
Yeah.
Good call. I thought, I looked at my copy that I thought everything was printed from, and I didn't see it, so. That's a pleasant surprise.
It's attachment six.
Attachment six, okay. This photograph here, you can see there's actually a piece of heavy-duty equipment here, and you can actually see this earth has been moved. This is a, if that's a five or six-foot fence down there, it appears that this is a fill slope down here at this end of the pad, roughly that size. You can see tracks from the wheels on the earth-moving equipment, has, has occurred, it looks like, very recently. And again, the fencing appears to be discontinuous at this point in time, June 19th, 2017. So because we have expansion, and we, and it appears we have, obviously have grading on this site, the registrant failed to meet the requirements of section seventeen ninety-five one sixty-five and seven, and they were denied, not only for that, but also for failure to meet seventeen ninety-five one sixty-five N ten, the fencing and lock requirements we just discussed, and failure to meet seventeen ninety-five one sixty-five I, the registration and posting requirements. Again, that denial went out on September 13th. On September 20th, 2017, there was a, an appeal filed. In that letter of appeal, the appellant states that they thought the posting on the fence was adequate. They state that all fencing, gates, and locks were up when correction photos were sent to code on May 22nd, 2017. There had been some subsequent damage to screening in, in the gate after the inspection, but that had been repaired. And also with the appeal came nineteen photographs submitted as proof of further corrections to the posting and the fencing and the locks. Real quickly, and I think Mr. Watts will speak to the fact that there was no, actually any posting on the fence or anywhere when he went to inspect this. And as you can see in the photograph from the sheriff that we just looked at, it really doesn't look that, that, in fact, that aerial by the sheriff was taken, I believe, on June 19th. It does not look like the fencing and gates and the locks are up as she states in the appeal on May 22nd. However, she did submit some further photographs. I reviewed those with Mr. Watts. I believe there were nineteen of them. I remember off the top of my head. Anyway, I had, I had Tom, Mr. Watts, look at them, and he felt pretty confident that they had submitted proof of the registration being posted adequately. However, you know, it was indeterminate as to whether we could actually see a lock there, and whether the fencing was actually adequate to meet those two violations. He stated that it would require further site inspection to determine whether those violations had been adequately corrected. In conclusion, on April 20th, there was an inspection by code compliance. They found five violations of the urgency order, urgency ordinance. On May 10th, a ten-day notice was given. The appellant acknowledged, received the notice on the same day. On May 22nd, the appellant provided photographic proof of two corrections. On May 24th, code instructed the appellant to go ahead and provide further photographic proof of the three outstanding corrections, which they did not do at that time. They did not respond. In addition to those outstanding code violations, there was the violation of the grading, and that was all added together. Denial was issued on September 13th. The registrant appealed, and with that appeal on September 20th, they provided some more photographs, which were really indeterminate when it came to corrections on two of the code violations. And that is my presentation.
Thank you.
Any questions? Paul, on your, I'm sorry.
No, I was going there.
On your aerial of, of June 28th, 2017, not showing the, the two years superimposed, just showing the-
The plain one there.
Yeah, that one. I don't understand. It looks as if this is also a photograph that had showed them. I don't know why the shadows of the prior trees are still there.
I don't believe myself that those are shadows. I believe those were probably piles of earth that went into the pots.
Okay. They just happened to be where the, where the trees used to be.
Okay. I mean, I'm not an expert, but that's what I'm thinking. It might be ground stumps.
And, and you're establishing a grading by the, the picture that showed the tracks going back and forth and back and forth?
Well, yes, that's one photograph right there that shows grading. And then again, if you, we look at this photograph here on the right, I believe that's the end of the cultivation site, and that's the, the slope that comes off the top of that pad, and it's sloping down to the left, towards the toe of that slope. It's hard to tell, but way down back there, I think you can see some black from that screen fencing coming around the corner. In the actual photo, I think you can see that. But I believe, I believe that photograph is taken along this edge right here. You're looking at the, the fill slope in that photograph, I believe.
And, except I think the fence is in a different place. That, that other one, I think the fence is up on top.
There's actually, in that photograph, there's two fences. There's this, you know, there's metal posts here and what would probably be barbed wire, and then up here, they put up wood posts, and it looks like field fence-
I see.
Of some sort.
But the, now the sheriff's aerial of, of six nineteen, that one, if there were fencing there, would you see it? I mean, you've, you've been somewhat non-committal as far as-
I'm going to remain non-committal. I, this is taken June 19th.
It's not graded.
I can't for certain say that. I mean, because these, this, I mean, what would we be trying to see? One of these narrow wood posts here, possibly?
Well, with the shadow of the fencing-
It's going to be tough to make that out, because there's no screening here like there is on the fence.
Basically, what you're saying is that they have the burden of proof, and they haven't proven that there was fencing between those, in those areas.
No, no, that's correct.
I think that was clearly the point, that the code compliance officer had requested additional information, that, okay, we, we've demonstrated proof of the sign posting and one or the other, the cleanup of the trash, but we still don't have proof of adequate fencing, locks, or the posting of the, the registration itself, and that was not provided. So we-
I think the posting, now you're satisfied that the posting is okay now, right?
With the appeal letter photos.
Yeah.
Okay. It wasn't approved within the ten-day period, but it, she, it was with the photos that came with the appeal letter.
Right. I don't, I don't have any more.
Commissioner Wooster, do you have anything?
No.
Commissioner Sess?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we'll let you come on up and speak. I have some questions, but. Hi.
Hi.
So you have fifteen minutes that you can go ahead and present your side of the case to us?
Well, basically, I've, I've done everything. It's like I explained, I've had an aneurysm, so I haven't really been able to go up there much, so the people I have taking care of it. All this was done when on, when they sent me a thing about the fencing and stuff all around it, the ten-day thing, I sent him pictures, and I, and the pictures, you don't even have half the pictures, but the pictures I gave him shows that there was fencing all the way around it. Okay, so then during the winds, this last, last winter, they knocked down the backside of the, the fencing, it knocked the whole thing down, and some of the, the green stuff got ripped, so we had to order some more because of that, but we put the fencing up. So it wasn't like we didn't have any fencing up there at all. You know, and the gate itself got run over, so.
I'm, I'm co-owner, John Jessup. I'll start from the beginning. From the beginning, you know, we got affected by the Butte fire as well. Took out our house, took out ninety percent of the trees. PG&E has contacted us, along with Jordan and Jordan, to come and to cut and remove these, these trees. They came, they cut them, and they kind of just cut them and left them where they were. Well, they came and actually cut two out of the three trees that were inside the actual plan area, plot area, however you want to say it, and they just left it there. They cut it, it landed on a bunch of my plants, as you could see in the picture as well, and, and I was pretty much stuck with not only debris from the fire, holes from what the fire created with the actual roots of the trees on fire. And, I mean, it's pretty deep, and, but, you know, we just cleaned it up as much as we can. As far as the big tractor that you see there, that was a day that I was not present, which I'm, from what I remember, was Jordan and Jordan, which it is a heavy machinery vehicle. They were supposed to come and remove all the trees that they cut and left in my gully. I have a gully, actually, probably two hundred and fifty feet, I can't tell from that picture, but two hundred and fifty feet away from the actual plan. What they did is they just pushed everything into a big pile. Well, I'm, I'm sorry, but I was affected of the fire, and to me, that's a fire hazard. You know, so I called, I complained. No one wants to get back to me as far as removing the actual debris along with everything else. So I cleaned it up, but not, not with a big, heavy machinery that you see there. Me and a couple other fellas did the same kind of fence, driving around with the fence type thing, but as far as, as far as anything else, that wasn't. And the fence was there. I actually have a video on my phone. I don't know if that's what you guys look at, but it's dated. The day that they actually came out and inspected, the picture that they took was, was a roll, was a roll of fencing on the floor. But if you see the posting, that was literally one side that wasn't up yet, because when we were installing it, my mom had to go back to the hospital, and I'm also my mother's caregiver. You know, I, I take care of my mother, along with my family, so I'm kind of doing this bit with my family. I have eight children of my own. I take care of my mother, and I have a wife, so I'm bouncing around one hundred percent. Do I admit that the fence wasn't up? Yes, I do admit not completely one hundred percent of the fence was up, because there was a section that wasn't. You could see it in the picture. But also in their pictures, you can see, they took pictures of the fence up, of the gate up, with the lock, with the chain around, you could see it on their pictures, you know, and then when I submitted my own pictures, I admit the, the, the address wasn't there, because at that time, I was very scared of looters. The planning department happened to release information of every commercial grow on the internet, and the only reason I found out is somebody that's not even grown in Calaveras contacted me and said, hey, man, your address is on there, along with your name, along with your, you know, cell phone number, everything. So I was scared, so we never put that. You know, and, and yeah, I admit to that. I admit to that one hundred percent, but as far as the fence, there was a little piece that wasn't up, and the debris all over the floor. A bear actually broke into one of our, our trailers that we had there, and he just tore everything up, everything. And that was another couple pictures that, did you-
No, I didn't say that was included.
And I have video, actually, of the day after they came. Everything was up completely, and that was on May 23rd of 2017.
I think under our procedures, we can't consider as part of the record anything that you have on your phone.
And I'll admit, I'm not one hundred percent ready for today, because my kids are in football, and I'm bouncing around, but-
And mom's been sick.
But I, I apologize one hundred percent for not doing exactly, and I admit that we didn't, we, because, you know, I'm helping her, didn't comply one hundred percent as far as, well, the locks were up, but not the- or ten feet outside the fence, so I just put it out front, you know, so, I mean, but other than that, everything you could see, you see the lock, you see everything, so.
I think that, are those pictures that they submitted?
Yes, sir.
That's not all of them.
Yeah, that's not all.
All of them were included in the staff report.
I didn't see that.
They're filled.
I don't, I don't mean to push you to being done. When you're done, we have some questions, so.
Yes, I'm, I'm done.
Okay. Could you call up that, that six nineteen seventeen picture that the sheriff took that one? Now, to me, that looks as if there are, and this was after planning had been informed that, that the pictures that had been submitted in May showed everything was complete. To me, that looks as if the fence is not complete, but also, it looks to me clearly that dirt has been moved, and at the lower right-hand corner of that picture, that you can see a slope that results from the fill of the land from apparently elsewhere on that, on that rectangle. And it, to me, it looks like a lot more than just having moved a few trees around. It looks like dirt has been moved, and from other pictures, we can see that there's more land being cultivated now within this rectangle than was originally cultivated in two thousand and sixteen. So I'd just appreciate if you could explain why my impressions are wrong.
Uh, no, actually, from, from the actual photos, they're not one hundred percent clear, let's all be honest. I'm thirty-one years old, and I can't see a fence, but let's, but there for sure is a fence, and the fence, actually, that's June nineteenth. I, like I said, I have a video of June twenty-third of the full, complete fence, full, complete fence, and actually, they have pictures as well that was sent in within those ten days of the full, complete fence as well. The green, actually, when I put the green, I put it from the bottom, the bottom corner all the way to the left, all the way up to the upper right, and I started, yeah, I have a, I have a.
Just turn it on.
So, so from here to here to here is, is the green stuff. Well, it starts to come this way. The, the picture that they showed actually started right there with, with the posts and everything this way. So right here in this picture, the posts were there along with the fence on June nineteenth. But the green, I was told, since I have a neighbor over here, about, you know, three or maybe two hundred yards that way, that I needed to put the green mesh here because it was within eyesight of a, I don't want to get this wrong, of a, of a street or a neighbor, I wanted to say, along them lines. But, but yeah, no, the fencing and everything was still there. As far as, as far as this part here, these gentlemen here are Jordan and Jordan. There was a tree, there was a tree here, I want to say, another tree here. As you could see on this one, they cut this one, and it tore down all my fence that was here. They actually cut this one, and this tree came all the way, I want to say, over here.
Can I, can I ask for a different view? Can I have you go to exhibit six, please, which is a sheriff's department photo as well? It's at the very end of our staff packet.
Hey, that's the new picture of Spudaway.
Well, who does this, then? And it says.
Number six.
Attachment six. That's six.
Which one's six? Oh, okay.
Close spike.
Oh, there it is.
Jordan and Jordan is who? He, they are the people that are coming to collect your trees?
They're subcontractors for PG&E. I guess PG&E contracted them out to try to clean up everyone's houses because they lost their house.
I understand, I understand. Okay, so I'm looking at this photo, and, and the issue that I have with it is that I cannot imagine that anybody cutting down or moving trees would use a box on the front of a tractor for grading to move trees. If you look at the attachment on the front of that tractor, it's a box grader. It's not a bucket for moving trees. It's, do you have a copy of the staff report? Can you go to almost the end of it? And also, it appears that there's two tractors. There's also a backhoe on the backside of a hill that's been excavated, and it looks like quite a bit of drainage and runoff is going through there.
Now, what number was that one?
Um, it's attachment six. There's three photos that are very similar. They look like they're sheriff's photos, is what it says.
Uh-huh. Is it this one that's right here?
No, it looks like this. You can actually see your fencing going around and.
Right near the end of the packet.
I mean, if I was grading my property, I would use a box grader like this.
Okay.
Okay, so that doesn't, it's very difficult for me to believe that's Jordan and Jordan, and then there's also a backhoe in that photo, too, so there's two tractors.
Yeah, there's.
Are any of those yours?
No.
And you don't know whose they are?
No. Actually.
And, and who graded that hillside behind your grow? Why is it graded like that? That's.
Behind my grow?
Okay, so right here on the side of the grow?
Yeah, to the left.
Yeah, there's a hillside that's, looks like it's taken on some runoff, and, and it's.
Yeah, what they were doing is they, they, the way that the guy explained to me is he wanted to clear it out because they were gonna, they were bringing the actual trees there and chopping them up and putting them on the truck, which I don't know how that works because I'm not in that field of, of business, but.
With a backhoe?
Huh?
With a backhoe?
Like I said, I, I don't deal in that.
Were they pulling stumps?
They, they pulled, well, actually, I wasn't there, so I'm only explaining to you what the gentleman on the phone told me and, and pretty much asked me for verbal, he had me sign a waiver on e, email, it's e-sign or something like that, and then what he did is he just did it, but he, he said, um, he kind of explained to it over the phone. He said, left, to the left of the actual gate, we're gonna set up a, like a area for us to cut trees and cut off branches, because actually, right here.
That's a pretty serious erosion issue if they've done that.
Yeah.
And then what's that dark spot at the very bottom?
The dark spot at the very bottom.
And is that a trailer that you're living in?
Uh, well, yes, not living physically, but.
Okay, but it was for, it was for, okay, so what's the dark spot, just to the left of that?
The dark spot?
Mm-hmm.
That looks like dirt.
Is that water puddling? Because in another picture, it looks like there's a big.
No, 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 it's, I think it's dirt. Dirt.
Or is that, is that, is that where they, where they were putting the stump, some of the stumps? You got some stumps there, and you got some over here, too.
No, the, the stump, well, actually, in that same picture that you're looking at, if you look all the way to the right, there's a gully that goes down. They actually made a, a flat area like this one here on the left that you see, the one that I'm explaining to you, that, that, they, they did the same thing over here, too, on the, on the right, where, exactly where the dot, white dot is.
Okay.
Uh, it goes down the hill.
I'm seeing what you're talking about.
Yeah, but you won't see the picture because the, the matter at hand right now is just over the, the actual site, cannabis site, instead of the gully and the trees from Jordan and Jordan, so.
The previous sheriff's picture does show what you're now talking about.
Uh-huh.
Not on the screen, no.
No.
Okay, um, the previous picture that he's talking about, actually.
They need a grading.
It's the second of three sheriff's photos that we have.
This stuff.
Oh, you said the second.
What I don't understand is why this pad has been built. Yes, he scraped it for the, or this company did because of trees, but why did they build up a pad in exactly this rectangular shape that just happened to be the size and shape you needed for your cultivation?
To be honest, I wasn't there, like I said in the beginning. Why it's, I mean, trust me, it looks exactly what you, what you're insinuating, trust me, it does, but as far as me paying somebody to do it, I've never once paid anyone to grade, and neither has she.
That tractor in the picture up here on the screen, is not the same tractor that we've been looking at?
No, no, that, that, that's actually, whoa, what does that mean?
That's, you're fine, keep going.
Okay.
We're, we're questioning, fifteen minutes would have been up, but we're just questioning you.
Oh, okay, um, that tractor actually is, is my Kubota, which I use to, to pull, like, mash. Well, the way that we did is, is we had a big barbed wire, a big rolled, rolled fence, and we're pulling it as long as with, um, what is it called?
Chain.
With chains and screens and stuff, because prior to this picture was the Butte fire, and the Butte fire left debris everywhere, along with tree branches, along with everything. So I was told that if I didn't clean the actual place where we were growing, we're gonna be denied for a, for a.
For everything.
For, um, what is it called?
Oh.
Like a contaminated, because it, it wasn't cleaned, and then the, our weeds.
Where was the house on this property?
Uh, the house, actually.
Right above where the, where the one trailer is at?
Where the trailer is to the left. Where the white trailer is.
So that would have been your contaminated area, not, not your grow, where the house was.
Yeah, not my grow.
No, because your, your grow wouldn't have been included in the contamination area.
Oh, okay.
Right?
Well, if there weren't some fire and stuff, everything's contaminated.
Yeah, that's what I was told, too.
I thought it was the footprints of the houses. No, I think it's everything.
I, I, I heard that it was all the dirt that was, well, the first four inches on the top was pretty much contaminated from the fire.
Okay, so when I said I seen water puddling, the picture is dated four twenty, two thousand and seventeen, and it's pretty significant. Where's that at? It doesn't have an attachment number. It just says overview of site, including junk, trash, and debris, and it's showing pooling of the water. It's on the, it's, it's right after the code compliance citation. It looks, apparently, I think this was something that the code compliance took a photo of.
Can I see, can I see? Oh, okay.
And then, so.
There's no water.
There's water.
You're saying that, that's what I think that big spot is out front of that grading.
Yeah, the big, the big spot right there, actually, right there where you see, that, that's where the house was.
Okay.
So when, um, I don't know who did the actual work, but they, I, I had a big slab, a slab for, yeah, and they took it out.
Right, they took it out. I understand, we understand that happened.
Okay, and then they never backfilled, and then I also had a, um, a couple other spots that they never backfilled, so it contains water.
And then I see a larger picture of your Kubota?
Yes, to the left.
Looks pretty much like the same tractor in the grading area. Both red.
Does the other one have a roof? No, the other one doesn't have a roof.
Okay.
Well, the one, one.
Yeah, there's a roof on there.
Oh, it does, okay.
That could come and go.
No, I think that was probably a pretty straightforward, okay.
But you ended up cultivating on this entire square that you say that a fence was around.
Yes, sir.
And that was the area that was graded for one purpose or another. I mean, it, it built up, built up a level, level square or rectangle with perhaps a six-foot drop at the, at the lower end. And yes, it cleared the trees, but also you used it for cultivation, the way I see it.
Yeah, they, they also flattened, I wouldn't use grading because I don't know what they were doing, but they flattened a lot of other areas on my actual property, which there would be no reason for me to do it either, in the gully.
If you go to the pictures that go way out, you can see they've done.
They also used my actual property to cut other people's trees down and bring it to my property, so not only do I have my own trees on my property, I have my neighbor's trees. The neighbor behind him had three hundred acres. My, mine was the more or less flat area that they were using.
Okay, let's go to the code compliance issues. So we got notice of code compliance, we got a ten-day notice to correct things.
Yes.
And we didn't do that.
Uh, we did, we actually did correct.
All of it?
Um, besides the front, um, the front sign, the front.
The code compliance officer is here, and he's gonna speak after you and, and.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, the, the only one that we didn't do, actually, within the ten, ten days, was, within the ten days, we didn't put the, the actual street, street address.
Oh, street address, is that?
No, not by that time, after the, after the ten days.
Oh, I think, it was, because this is the pictures that I sent.
Oh, it was actually, actually, no, pretty much everything was up.
The only thing, I may not know, I had, I had that on one thing instead of on board, it was on, it was on.
The, the fence at one time, when Jordan and Jordan were here, if, in this, in the picture that you, you could see with the tractor on it, they, they crashed, they ran it over. They ran it over with the tractor.
Ran what over?
Uh, my fence, my actual gate, the actual gate, they ran it over. So I was waiting to see if they were gonna give me a check and I'll, I'll do it, or they were gonna repair it, or something was gonna happen along those lines, because I didn't do it, so I don't think that I should have to fix it myself.
Really?
Huh? I mean, they're a company, they're, they're a big company, you know, paid by PG&E, they should do things the right way instead of running over people's fences, I mean.
But they weren't the ones having a very water grow in their new board.
Um, yes, ma'am, that, that is, that is one hundred percent true, but that's, that's like you buying a car from a, a dealer, and, and then the dealer crashes it, wouldn't you want the dealer to fix it if the dealer, you know, why fix something?
I don't see it as the same, so I'll just give you that.
You, you don't see it as the same because it's exactly what we're dealing with today is this issue, but as far as, you know, a thousand or two thousand dollars worth of damage, why should I have to pay another two, two thousand dollars of damage for a company that, that they should be giving me a, they should be issuing me a check?
To keep your site secure, and then what you do is ask for reimbursement.
Yes, exactly.
So, I mean, obviously, you can see now why you should have repaired it, because it's causing you a lot of problems.
When you explain it that way, that's, that's for sure, I understand.
Right, okay, so let's, let's do, let's do something else here. Do you have any new information you want to give us, or do any of the other commissioners have any questions? Because we have a lot more appeals to go today. Okay.
I have just one.
Okay.
The, the pad that's shown on attachment six, that's the June nineteenth of this year. When was that created?
When was it what?
Created.
When was that pad created?
On, on which, which?
He's back to that photo where I was talking about the hillside, and it's all the way at the end of the packet.
Uh-huh.
He's asking when your grow pad was created. When was that made? Was it there in, in May of two thousand and sixteen?
Yes.
Was it there in January two thousand and sixteen?
January two thousand and sixteen.
When did you start growing? When did you put that pad in?
Um, in, well, we had to get everything done by May tenth, so it had to be before then, January.
But it was enlarged after that. Through this.
Actually, it wasn't technically, well, because my actual growth side, you can't see it right here on this picture. Can you go back to the one where you said that was the growth side in two thousand and sixteen?
I think figure five would show. Oh, no, because that was still fence there.
See, because here, here is the actual growth, it's a different angle.
Mm-hmm.
That last angle, we were looking at it, the picture, the aerial picture was taken from this side, so we seen around here. That's what we were looking at. But I also have plants up and under this, and it kind of goes a little bit this way, then it goes back this way, and then there's a couple plants along and there. When we first started growing, it was, it was so-called illegal or whatever, we were doing it without a permit. So majority of plants, we were kind of hiding them, so to say. So if it was under a tree or wherever we could put them, we put them. The actual first pictures that I sent them, because they said that I had to show them proof of prior to May tenth, two thousand and sixteen, I showed them plants under the tree over here. I showed them majority of, of a lot of stuff.
Do you have those in the file there, Paul?
And, and as you could see in this picture, it's already kind of flat here.
He said he submitted his application showing you plants under the trees.
And, and then in this area here, you could already see that it's flat and it was bare. You, you see this area?
Excuse me? Yeah, actually, there are small plants under the trees.
Okay, great.
Right, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, when I, when I look at the aerial of May thirty first of two thousand and sixteen, which is figure three, which shows your grow site.
Can we go to that picture, please?
I don't, I don't see the pad that's showing up on the photographs of June nineteenth, two thousand seventeen. Uh, can you show me where that is in existence on May thirty-one of two thousand sixteen?
Uh, the, the pad you're talking about here?
Oh, that's, that area.
Okay, in, in that area, you could see this tree here, there's a tree here, a big tree here, along with another couple trees here and here. So, uh, how they got the tree from there to here, uh, I have no idea, it wasn't there, like I said, but there's a, there's a driveway that Cal Fire or Jordan and Jordan made kinda all through my property, and along this line is a big golee, um, big, deep area. So what they did is all the plant, all the plants, all the trees that were from my neighbors over here, my neighbor over here, my neighbor here, they put it there. So what I was thinking is maybe they just brought all the trees here, but I don't wanna say thinking because I have no idea.
Well, I'm not concerned about the trees.
You're concerned about the flats.
I'm concerned about the pad because when I look at the photographs in June of two thousand seventeen, I see a pad with a toe of fill, and I'm not seeing it a year earlier.
Yeah. I mean, the year earlier, you're, you're not gonna see the aerial 'cause they didn't take it.
Yeah, they did.
Yeah, they did, May thirty-one of two thousand sixteen. And there's nothing that looks like a pad.
Well, that is an aerial that you're looking at also.
That aerial is two thousand and sixteen, but like I said, the...
We're comparing that to now.
Yeah.
And there wasn't supposed to be any grading done from there to now, and that's what we're, that's what he's trying to ask you is, there is no flat pad there right now.
Yeah.
But today there is.
Yeah.
How did the flat pad get there and who put it in?
I have no idea. The only, the only thing I can say is Jordan and Jordan, when they started putting the trees here and cutting them, 'cause they also left a lot of trees here as well, that, that are already, uh, chopped and like, ready to put, put on the truck, and this actual area here is, is to the driveway to go back to...
So, so what you're telling me is that Jordan and Jordan drove over the top of your plants and threw your fence and...
No, no. Um, at the time that Jordan and Jordan started to cut, they cut and they kinda broke a bunch of plants, so we kinda put all the plants over here while they were doing all their, their, whatever they were doing.
Okay, and I can see what you're talking about. It looks like it's...
Maybe I'm not understanding.
No. It's not, you don't step up into it, there is not, there is not anything like that, you, nothing up there. You can step on it just like I'm, I would step from here to here.
But they're asking now it became flat.
But... Because of the way the fencing is, it looks that way in the way they're taking that picture, it looks like it's sitting up, it's not.
And technically, it's not...
Well, we're seeing grading marks from a tractor, we're seeing the dirt graded, we're seeing tractor marks.
That I don't know about, I didn't give anybody any permission to do that, so I don't know.
But you're growing on it.
Huh?
You're growing on it.
Yes.
You're growing in the graded area.
Technically, the gr, the, the part that you're saying is graded, it's not graded, it's literally like this.
Okay.
So it was cleaned up prior to Jordan and Jordan.
Okay. Can, can we hear from code compliance and then you're gonna get a second opportunity for rebuttal?
Yeah, sure.
That would be awesome, thank you, uh, actually, yes, that's what I wanna do.
Okay, when, when you, uh, when you were on the property, you, you've been on the property once, correct?
Yes, just once.
Um, and how did the property look different to you than what you see in this picture?
Um, so when I was out there, it was more of, um, just an, an open area, just open grassland, um, the trees had been cut, but the stumps were still there, um, certainly not a clearly defined pad like this is. In fact, in some of the photos in the report, you might even see that it was, that it'd be like an open, grassy hillside.
And the photographs that you received after, well, with, with the appeal letter, um, that supposedly showed complete fencing, as I understand it, um, what was lacking from that? What, what more would you have needed in order to, uh, agree that there was complete fencing?
Um, so I imagine the photos that came with the appeal letter are different to the ones that I received, um, after I issued the correction notice.
Yeah, I, I, I thought you also saw the ones after the appeal on...
Um, I think, I think Paul did show me them at some point, yeah.
Okay, I'll direct that question to Paul.
I'm sorry.
Okay, as I understand it from the staff report, that with the appeal came some more photographs.
Yes.
But they were not sufficient to provide adequate proof of correction...
Correct.
Of, of the, uh...
Of the fencing?
Fencing, as well as locks. Yeah, and what more would you have needed? What, what would've been the missing link, so to speak?
So after I issued the correction notice, I received, um, I think it was only maybe two or three photos of the fence, which showed the, uh, I think it's the east side of the grow. Um, when I went out to do the inspection, the north and east sides had a fence up, the south and west sides were still completely open. Those two sides weren't included in the correction photos. So I could say from the correction photos that, yeah, at least some of the fence is up, but I'm not gonna sign off and say that it's like fully fenced all the way around.
Thank you.
Did you go out, back out and do a second inspection?
No, just won't.
You asked for more photos and never received them?
Yeah. That was on the twenty-fourth.
Planting department received more photos and they were still inconclusive, is that...
Yes, the, I reviewed the photos that came with the appeal with Mr. Watts and still found that it was not adequate for the fencing and the locks.
Okay.
Okay, I gotta make sure this is clear, so you issued a, he issued a ten-day correction notice, received two photos, no further photos were, were provided until the ones that were received as part of the appeal letter. Well, there were nine photos that came after the correction photos. Of those nine, it corrected two of the five violations, leaving three of the violations outstanding. Two of those violations were code violations.
But you are, you are s... You are proposing that the denial is still based on some of, I mean, like the, the posting the registration notice, that still, since they, since they had their chance to correct it and they didn't until after denial, that's still a ground?
Yes.
When you went to the site, nobody was there, correct?
No, nobody.
You went on April twentieth of this year?
Um, yes.
And there's some photos dated April twentieth. Can we pull some of those up? There's one that shows quite a few plants and pots that are put together.
Was it June twenty?
This is April twenty.
April twentieth.
I don't...
Oh, was that before?
Photos say four twenty.
I don't have those on the slideshow.
You don't?
No, sir, I don't have all the photos that are in the staff report.
Mr. Watts, are you familiar with this photograph?
Yeah, those are like the ones that I took during my inspection.
Is that approximately the way the site looked, the grow site looked when you inspected?
Yeah, as you can see there, it's just kind of open, grassy, um...
And then later on, we have sheriff's photos, which we've talked about several times, showing what appears to be fresh grading, and it's dated June of this year, June nineteenth of this year, and the other was seventeen also. So you have not seen the site in that condition?
No, it wasn't like that during my inspection in, um, April.
Like that one?
No.
Okay, so...
That's all I have, Mr. Watts.
I, I don't have any further questions either.
I just wanted to make sure that, that it's clear that, Tom, that, that, that graded pad was not there when you visited in April?
Uh, no.
Okay, so do you have, uh, we need to go to public comment. Yeah, that's true, we should be... Paul, did you have any more rebuttal?
No, ma'am.
Okay, and then you do, 'cause I have another question for you. So this is your opportunity to rebuttal anything that staff has said.
One, they said they received only three, three photos when I sent over fifteen photos.
We have them.
Okay.
That was an error.
All right, 'cause it all comes together.
Yeah, no, we've got them all.
Uh, along, along with, um... When he did, when he went out there, there was one piece that was off, but the, the correction photos that I sent within the ten days showed the back corner from right here to right here with the fence on there. And if you have the original photos that I, I gave, they're pretty clear. Here on a projector screen, they do not look clear, but if, I wish, and I, I wish and I wish that I would've brought the actual photos, 'cause that day I, I took...
Aren't these the actual photos?
Uh...
Some of them aren't, they're showing, they're showing the front.
Yeah, but copies of photos, they're not as clear as the originals, and the originals were pretty HD where you can see that there's a fence there and it was...
Okay.
Before we move from that picture, can I, Paul?
Well, I am, I'm wondering if we should interrupt his rebuttal and we should give him his opportunity. Then we'll ask you a question. Go ahead and finish your rebuttal.
I think you, I think we've lost that because we're not...
One was your photos, two was...
I've been, I've been here since nine o'clock this morning and I'm...
Us two!
I feel sorry for you guys, for sure.
Thanks.
Um, but, uh, all the pictures that I sent, within the first ten days, uh, when, when I first sent the pictures, within the first ten days, the fence was up, it was up. I promise you it was up, there was a lock, it was one hundred percent genuine. Then, or actually, no, bef, bef, was it before? I don't remember, I, I'm sorry about that, I do so much in one day, I don't really know times and dates and don't remember that much either, but they were up, along with, uh, after we got the notice of denial, actually, we went back up there and made sure that everything was back up, and actually, I think that's when I put the...
The screening wasn't back up though, right?
The screening, actually, no. The screening wasn't.
I can see a break in the screening in this photo and I can see your fencing.
Yes.
The fencing was there.
The actual gate is when, the one that you're talking about?
Okay, but on the grading portions of it, what I see in your photos that don't exist in today's photos...
Uh-huh.
Is all these stumps, and these were photos that you submitted of all these stumps. These aren't in that graded area anymore. So somebody did some grading and moved...
That's actually on the outside, that's from the outside looking in.
Well, that's maybe because the fence curves in, so does the fence, no, 'cause, no, this is not on the outside, the fence goes down and curves.
I, I promise you, if you look, you can see the actual gate.
Is that the gate open?
It's the gate open, yeah. I promise, that's on the outside.
Okay, I can see it when you'd explain it that way.
My question, which, if you can go back to the, the slide that had the two... Yeah, that picture on the right, to me, looks like the end of a graded pad with fill and then a drop-off of at least four to six feet. Is, that's what's there on the property now?
Yeah, it is, I'm not, I'm not gonna lie to you, trust me, I, uh...
Thank you.
What, what it was is when, when, uh, after we went around, we, whatever debris, whatever we found, we kinda scavenged through it and threw all the debris away and just left the dirt. That's, that's what it is, but as far as the grading, we did not grade it.
So you say that you weren't there when all this was being done?
No.
You weren't there when Jordan and Jordan was there?
No.
You weren't there when all of this happened?
No.
I've been in and out of the hospital, and I just got over, I'm just now getting over pneumonia, so he's been...
I'm her only sibling.
I hope you feel better.
Thank you.
Um, but you weren't there, who was doing this grow? Who was managing it? Who was on the property?
Uh, managing it, supposedly, it was supposed to be me, as far as like making sure that everyone was doing what they're supposed to do, which I, I didn't. I didn't make sure that they were doing what they're supposed to do.
Who was there?
Uh, a couple friends.
Did you hire people or friends?
It was friends. It was friends that we've known for a long time.
So here's the problem that I'm having, when I just, I probably need to be closing it, but I just wanna give you the opportunity to understand where we're at.
Yeah, I understand.
The burden of proof is on you to convince us that Jordan and Jordan was there, that Jordan and Jordan excavated your land, which I'm really struggling with.
Yeah.
Um, if they moved trees that were dead or cut down trees, I get that, but to pull stumps, grade the land, move dirt, and I can see this has been done, you can see it be, has been done, you've been pretty honest with admitting the truth. I appreciate that very much. But what you haven't given us is the proof that we need that this was done. You know, should you have brought your friends with you to be able to testify? Maybe. Should you have brought in some, something from Jordan and Jordan that says, hey, yeah, we messed up his land, we ran over his fence, we probably should've done that too? So we don't have enough evidence before us to rule in your favor is the problem I'm having. Grading has happened.
Can I say something real quick?
Yes.
Um, like I said in the beginning, I wasn't really prepared.
Mm-hmm.
As far as Jordan and Jordan, they will not call me back. I've left numerous and numerous of voicemails threatening them that if they don't come back and pick up what they cut down, I was gonna sue them, just to try to, you know, food for thought, hopefully they get their act together. They have not, they have not even re, replied to any type, and then as far as the stumps, they didn't pull out the stumps, we did.
Right.
We pulled out the stumps.
Okay. Um, okay, so, yeah, I'm just, do you have anything further, any new information that you can give to us today?
If, if I, if I was able to have a little bit of more time, I, I could, you know, I
So I have really good news for you.
could... You don't?
If, no, I do.
Oh.
I really do. If by chance we deny you today...
Yes.
This information's all on the record and you can appeal it to the supervisors and get your act together really super quick.
Oh, really?
So you get one more chance to battle this.
Oh, okay.
Okay, let me ask you, will you, will you look in here and look at these pictures and it'll show you exactly what the land is?
She hasn't seen one in front of her.
I know, but that's what I'm saying. Look underneath here, it shows that it's not built up.
Okay, but the other photos do, and your son, being on the property, has said that yes, there is an area that is built up.
Well, that's only on this one side right here.
Yeah, on the back corner, on the back corner it is, it is. 'Cause the, the actual, where, where the pad is, it kinda goes up like this, it's not graded flat, it's, it's kinda really cleaned up and...
She has a quick question.
I, I just wanna clarify one thing that was stated by the chair, um, while you do have the right to appeal, there is a provision in the Board of Supervisors' rules about new evidence, it's not guaranteed that any new evidence that wasn't presented here, it may, the board may or may not decide to send it back to the planting commission to look at it again, it's not a guarantee that you will be, that they will accept the new evidence.
Oh.
Just giving you a heads up.
I just wish I had my phone.
Yeah, 'cause I also have pictures on my phone along with video of, of, um, May, no, uh...
Okay, so I'm gonna stop you right now and, um, I want to, um, what would those new photos show us? Just explain real quick, two seconds.
Um, the new, it shows you that it's, it's not as flat as you would think it is, and the fence was completely, completely up along with the, the main gate on, on May twenty-third. It was after that, Jordan and Jordan ran it over.
Okay. Um, I think, unless you guys have any further questions, I'm gonna go ahead and close this and get public comment at this point? Okay. All right, 'cause we have to keep moving forward here. Okay, all right, 'cause we have to keep moving forward here.
Thank you for clicking, Sharon.
I think we've already had public comment, this was the rebuttal time. Didn't, wasn't, yeah. I think, I think we did.
I don't, we don't, because she told me to go to rebuttal and not public.
I don't think there was any public, you asked for it, and there was then, but we go ahead and get it.
Was there any public comment? Let's just make triple sure we handle that, okay, good. Um, okay, so then, I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing, bring it back to the commissioners, um, for deliberations, and where do we wanna start?
Well, you looked at me, I'll, I'll start.
Go ahead and give it your best.
Um, I think, I think it's clear that there was grading, and it was taken advantage of for the grow, and that's enough for me to deny the appeal, and I wouldn't clutter it up with the other grounds, 'cause there could well have been fencing that wasn't shown, that did not show up in the aerials. Um, and we know that the registration was finally corrected, but that, I, I just would like to keep this clean and go on the grading, and say there was grading after May tenth, and, uh, keep it at that.
My turn?
Yes, please.
Um, I agree with those comments, the, uh, it's not clear to me whether the fence and gate and everything was fixed, I think it was. Various stories, they all make sense. I'm not sure about cluttering, but I, I just, not clear at all which way the facts went. The grading has very definitely been done after May of sixteen, and a considerable amount of grading. I just find that a little hard to believe that Jordan and Jordan would've done that much, without, maybe not being paid, but certainly, uh, with the applicant's knowledge. And it certainly helped, uh, clean up the pad and bring it up, so that you could use it and can use it for cultivation. So I will, uh, am I doing, overruling the, denying the appeal?
Denying the appeal.
As, as to the grading part.
Commissioner Sisk?
I agree with what Tim said, the grading is obvious, we could deny it, just on the grading alone.
Okay. Commissioner Worcester?
Well, I agree that there, the evidence does show grading, and we can infer it was for the purpose of cultivation, because they were cultivating on it. And it doesn't really matter how flat it is, it, it was a pad that was created, level or not. My own view is that there was a posting violation that should've been, that posting should've been done by, um, June thirtieth of two thousand sixteen, and it was no posting whatsoever at the first, uh, inspection, and there was no fencing on two sides of the grow, on the first inspection. And it's unclear whether that's ever been fixed. I would deny the appeal on all grounds.
Uh, uh, just as a clarification, I'm not saying that the fencing was complete, or that the registration was properly done. I think it's a, such a clear violation on the grading, that, uh, to keep the record clean and simple before the Board of Supervisors, that's all we need to do. But I'm, I'm not saying, yes, they've satisfied their version of proof as to the others.
Uh, the grading is definitely there, so I'm not concerned about that. When I look at the fencing, um, and the lock, there's a lock there, is it secured, is it gonna keep people from going in and out? I, I can't tell, that's pretty hard to rule on. As far as the fencing being, um, going the whole direction and, and being solid, I can see photos that they submitted that do show, even though the screening's not there, the fencing is. So I'm at a- I, I'm, I'm struggling with, I have one, two, three that are saying grading alone, one says all, and I'm in the middle, I think we're overruled, and so I think that we can, um, ask that the resolution be amended to go with the three that wanna say grading alone? 'Cause I'm, I'm not sure that I'm comfortable with the fencing and the lock issue, I don't know. So, we're, we're gonna amend to just base the denial on grading, is what the polling is showing.
Very good, so we will strike the first and second findings, uh, for those two issues, and it will be grading alone, and the resolution will be thus amended. So, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution two zero one seven dash zero seven six, denying appeal two zero one six dash seven eight two, thereby opposing the plant, planning director's determination to deny application two zero one six seven eight two as amended.
Okay, can I get a motion?
I saw move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Would you like to read him his appeal?
So this, uh, action is final, um, unless appealed to the Board of Supervisors within fifteen calendar days from today's date.
Okay, um, we need to take a five-minute break, if we could, please, for our camera person over there, thank you.
Can we make it possibly like ten minutes? I would like to talk with the planning director.